It is six o'clock. I'd like to get our city council meeting underway.
As of all the extra traffic.
All right, all right. I'd like to open up our city council meeting for Monday, April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. I ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the letter of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us prepare ourselves and for however you see fit. Most gracious and heavenly Father, Lord, we come to this day to say thank you, oh Father God. We thank you for all that you do for us each and every moment of our lives, oh Lord. We actually, we thank you for the city council, oh Father God, and we thank you for those that will be coming on in the next coming days, in the next month or so. Lord, we ask that you give them all strength to lead the city of North Chicago forward. Lord, we want to thank the North Chicago, Rotary and the Exchange Club, oh Father God, for the pinwheel garden that is out front for the abuse of children, oh Father God. We ask that you continue to watch over those that are being abused and also just to be watched over the those that they may be being attempted to, oh Father God. We ask that each and every individual, if they see something, say something, oh Father God, so these children would, will continue to have lives they could enjoy themselves. Lord, as we start this city council meeting, we ask that you be amidst of each and everything that we do. This is my prayer in our dying son Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen. Do we have a roll call?
Alderman Jackson. Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
How's that?
Alderman January.
All right, uh, first off, omnibus vote agenda.
Mayor Rockingham.
Alderman Allen.
To make a motion that we approved the omnibus vote agenda, five-one through five-three, as presented. Second.
Remove Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Evans, that the omnibus vote agenda be passed as presented. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
No.
Motion carried. Uh, public comments. I think the board being passed around, is there possibility we can get the board back? No. All right, moving on to regular, no.
That's right.
Okay, Charlotte Burns.
But I have lots of things, so I'm gonna try to say it very quickly, so I hope you guys catch it. I want to say thank you for service. I've been able to call a number of the aldermen, who whether it's the fourth ward, which we're, us to be a part of, the mayor, I've been able to call on and get a support and assistance. Alderman January, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Evans have been there. Um, you guys, I know, represent different wards, but it's my hope that the wards that are struggling, especially with junior aldermen, and particularly my concern tonight is about the second ward and public housing. And with a response that should have been a little bit different on March sixth. I've had an opportunity, I shared a little bit with the mayor. My concern is that the fact that we are getting our calls dispatched out, it's hard when you have multi-family units for people to actually know. I work in the building as a medical support. I do discharge plane in hospitals. And I will tell you that when you're in certain sides of that building, Kukula Towers, calls don't go through. So I'm concerned about lives. I'm about saying something, doing something. I know a lot of people don't want me to say anything, but I cannot negate the fact that lives that could be saved are not saved. And I'm talking about a family member on March sixth and how something was not handled appropriately. Okay, I appreciate you all. I know your jobs are tough and things happen. In, in tragedies, things happen. There's a lot going on. I know I've called the fire department, the police department. I've always got support. My hope is that the people in the first, second, third, fifth, sixth, and seventh wards are getting the same attention as their aldermen are asking for and calling for. I'm blessed to be in the ward and it's not to shed light on anybody else, but I'm hoping that people in Kukula Towers, when they call, they get the same response. I will tell you a little history. My family, my uncle actually owned, he was a private landowner, owned land from Tenth Street to Highwood. A lot of the public housing land, the schools are sitting on land that he owns. We need to look at calling for a moratorium on this land and my family should have, also have some input as to what's hap- happening with this land. I have some ideas and some plans, what we can do for those residents, but they're also, when we're trying to discharge people to Kukula Towers and other places, the, the agencies are afraid to go in there. They say it's too many drugs and crime going on in those buildings. They don't feel safe sitting there staff there. So I've seen it. I know it's something going on. And if I see it, our police officers need to be better trained to do it because I don't feel safe. When I'm in this place, the state police go with me. When I have to do an elder protective case, I have protection. We cannot negate citizens just because they don't live in our ward. I'm, I'm, I'm not okay with that. I'm not okay with that. Ernie Smith did not have to die. The, the technology, the landlines don't work. The phones don't work on one side of the building. And in two thousand and fourteen HUD said that emergency response system should have been put in every unit. I've worked for HUD before. Where's the resident council?
Ms., Ms. Burns, thank you.
That's all I'm saying.
All right, all right. I understand. And, and we will start to look into that also. We will. Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. January.
Alderman to you. That the emergency people know their job. Why did the police ask them to leave as my design?
Thank you.
Nobody was there that could declare him dead but me. I work for hospitals. Police officer don't do it. The man was carried out the back door like a dog.
Thank, thank you. Next.
Charles January.
Right here. Good evening, North Chicago.
Good evening.
I'm not gonna talk too much tonight. Screaming holler, just my nerves is up, but I, I do want to thank my wife for sitting up here for twelve years and got together with Leon Rockingham. I, uh, I want to appreciate her for that. I'm not gonna go too far in the state, but I'm disappointed, city council. I can't blame you guys because you didn't know, but I found out some stuff. Since two thousand and seventeen, the, uh, wooden apartments that's on our property over here is being taken away. And this mayor's sitting on top of that and didn't say nothing to nobody. So that property is gone. That property is gonna belong to Ross and Franklin, which is gonna make that property, Ross and Franklin acquired it. They're a five oh one C nonprofit organization. That's one of the best apartment complexes we had in North Chicago. It's going away because this mayor. That's not right, city council. I would, I would hope you say no, but the way they're gonna do it is they're gonna sell that property, give it to somebody, then they're gonna give it back. So there's no citizen input to that. That's the only apartment complex we got in North Chicago that makes any sense for the citizens of North Chicago. And now it's gonna be gone. And the other thing that's gonna happen is the seventh ward that my wife was in, she's gonna, he's gonna try to get you guys to give that away so he can appoint who he want to appoint. That's not what this should be about. But I, I'm not gonna shut up. I'll, I'll, I'll go to the citizens and, and tell them we need to change the system here. That's what we need to do. And we need to have more transparency, which we have none right now. I, I, I don't want to talk about Leon Rockingham as a, as a person. He's a wonderful person, but as a mayor, he's terrible.
Thank you.
He is killing our town. And I, I can tell you that I'm a citizen. I have a right to tell you that. And my time's not up yet, so when it comes up, I'll tell you. But he should have not been praying over the city council. We have a lot of, we have aldermen here that are elders. We have pastors in this town that are, he don't need to be praying over y'all. That's not right. Open your mouth, city council. There's a lot of aldermen here. I, I fight with. I'm gonna miss fighting with Carl Evans the most, but that's my buddy. I ain't got nothing to say bad about him because he represents his community. Anybody representing your community, I ain't got no problems with. Winning and losing, that's, that's hard life. But stealing and not misdirecting city money, city funding, city council, I'm gonna say something to you every time I, I got breath in my dag on bottom. No way do we pay a one man a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in a town that the average citizen, black or white, don't make sixty-five thousand dollars a year. Somebody's not in their right mind. City council, take care of that. That's not up to him. Thank you.
Elaine Collins.
Tiffany.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm coming.
Good evening, everyone. You all know my name. My name is Ms. Elaine Collins. I'm attended over where? Brookstone. I would like to address everyone who won the race. Congratulations for who all didn't. Hey, it's, it's, it's a good run. Thank God for the opportunity to be able to run. All right. I would like to address something tonight. I would like to thank Donna. Donna, I would like to make a referendum for us to celebrate her in one way or another. If anybody's interested, please let me know. Donna is remarkable. You guys know Donna and she deserves to be honored. Also, come on over to prayer meeting tomorrow night, five to six. Okay? Everyone is invited. Twenty-six, what? Forty-five South Bruce Drive. Ring the bell.
Carmisia Hawthorne.
Good evening, Mayor Rockingham and city council and our wonderful constituents. I definitely bring great cheer and not only that, but I have my Christmas gear on because it was snowing this morning. So I, I thought it was rather appropriate for me to wear red and, red and black to remind us of what's supposed to be leaving. But anyhow, I'm back to let you guys know that day is approaching. April twelfth, guys, Easter egg hunt for the children starts at eleven o'clock sharp. And guess what? The adult Easter egg hunt is definitely gonna be, you guys do not want to miss out. Please call the district to register. That's all we need you guys to do. Um, we got, we got a couple of, um, flashlights for you guys, but we need you guys to come participate. This is gonna be an awesome thing. It's the first time at Falls Park, uh, um, adult Easter egg hunt. Now, we have something great coming on. Let me, let me piggyback just for a second. Over this past weekend, the Chicago Bears, we had the honor of having girls flag football team. I think that, that, that deserves a round of applause because we've never had that before. And the Chi- Chicago Bears came and they showed up for Falls Park and they actually took it over to the high school, raised fifth grade on up, older. And the girls participated very wonderfully. So I just want to say, we definitely got great things going on at Falls Park. So now on to the grown folks side. We got Chicago-style stepping class coming on. Come get your groove on with, uh, Alicia Inkey at Falls Park and that's starting on Monday, March thirty-first, which is already started. So you guys can call and actually get the information so you guys can come in and learn how to step. Moving right along, we have the spring junior golf program, two thousand and twenty-five, that's coming up actually, and it's for the ages of eleven to fourteen. And they're gonna be practicing golf skills as well as the classes will be held at the community center. So please get the word out, guys. Please let the children come on and learn how to play some golf. Moving right along, still new stuff coming to Falls Park. We got the Eagles martial arts class. Oh my goodness. I think I might be involved in this. Um, but it's starting on Thursday. It's for the ages of five to eight, also nine to twelve, thirteen and up. And basically, they're gonna teach, teach the children about child safety seminars once per year and they're gonna learn martial arts. Isn't that nice for our students?
Right.
All right. And then we also got the boots up line dancing for some of you guys that want to get out there and shake a tail feather. Um, guys, come on out. It's every Thursday from six-thirty. I'm sorry, six o'clock, correction, six o'clock to seven-thirty. You can come out. If you just got two left feet, guess what? They will accept you and you will definitely learn. Now finally, we have the Falls Park cheerleader registration now open for the students K through eight. So please call the district. And again, it's Commissioner Carmisia Hawthorne bringing your friendly neighborhood announcements, guys. Please participate and you guys have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. Okay, uh, moving on, regular agenda, seven dash one, consideration ratification of a proclamation declaring April month of the military child.
Mayor Rockham.
Alderman Evans.
I would like to, consideration ratification of proclamation declaring April month of the military child as presented.
Remove Alderman Evans, second by Alderman January, that seven dash one be passed as presented. Are there questions? Alderman January.
Proclamation, month of the military child. Whereas the city of North Chicago is proud to be home to Naval Station Great Lakes, the Navy's largest training installation and the site of the Navy's only boot camp. And whereas the city of North Chicago is steadfast on honoring the brave Americans serving in the United States Armed Forces along with their spouses, partners, and especially their children. And whereas the month of the military child established in nineteen eighty-six as part of, of the legacy of former Defense Secretary Casper Weinberger, recognizes and celebrates the children of the military families. And whereas military children contribute significantly, significantly to the strength, resilience, and readiness of our military families and the communities that support them. And whereas we recognize and appreciate the contributions of military children and youth and reaffirm our commitment to providing them with the high-quality care, education, and opportunities for positive development. Now therefore be it proclaimed that April twenty-fifth, April, April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five as month of the military child in the city of North Chicago and encourage all residents to join in recognizing and celebrating the incredible strength, courage, and resilience of military children throughout our community. And with, in witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of North Chicago to be affixed this seventh day of April, two thousand and twenty-five.
You've heard the proclamation and other questions or any other questions? Hearing, oh, Alderman January?
I would like to, as I'm closing out my aldermanship, um, shortly here, I wanted to say to city of North Chicago, please do be committed to the military. We are a military city and we need to commit to their support. Um, there is so much that goes on with being, um, in the military as, um, Alderman Carl Evans knows, he's been part of the Navy. Um, and several others have served in the military in the past. So I just ask that the city continue that commitment and, uh, be there for the children especially because they're the ones that don't really understand the moving around every three years, two to three years. Um, and then they're having to make new friends and it's really hard on the children in the military. So please keep them in your prayers and please be committed to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Anyone else? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Coleman, Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith, Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Motion carried. Seven dash two, consideration approval of thirty-one hundred Skokie Highway. Ordinance approving amendment to special use permit plat of vacation and final plat of re- uh, re-subdivision.
Mayor Rockham.
Alderman Evans.
I would like to approval of thirty-one hundred Skokie Highway, ordinance approving amendment to special use permit, plat of vacation and final plat of re-subdivision. Second.
Been moved by Alderman Evans, second by Alderman Allen, that seven dash two be passed as presented. Are there questions? Alderman January.
Uh, we have Tyler. They'll come up and have, explain what does this mean? It doesn't have to be real fast.
Absolutely. Well, good evening, city council. Yeah, reason this is on the regular agenda as opposed to omnibus is because the city attorney did review this again, took fresh eyes on it, made a few tweaks, uh, but the substance remains the same. Still approving an amendment to the special use permit for the Compass, uh, travel center out there on the Skokie Highway. It still, uh, approves the plat of vacation for that part of Bonaparte and also approves the plat of re-subdivision, which consolidates all those parcels into one development parcel. So all that substance remains the same, really just boiled down to some of the, the legal terms of the, the document itself. And then also we changed the agenda item to reflect the address of the subject property as well. That was absent in the committee agenda, so.
Thank you.
Alderman Smith.
By changing it, does that change the tax, um, that have to be paid by making it from three separate ones to one?
So it would create one tax parcel identification number, so they would pay taxes on the one pin as opposed to, uh, there's eight or so parcels.
I can be asking it a different way. By paying is one, by paying is, by, by them paying one parcel, are they paying less as opposed to three?
No, the formula that the assessor's office uses is based on the value of the property and that will not change.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith. Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Motion carried. Thank you, Taylor. Uh, seven dash three, consideration, uh, resolution for two thousand and twenty-five CDBG public funds.
Mayor Rockham.
Alderman Evans.
I'd like to approve a consideration of resolution for two thousand and twenty-five CDBG public funds.
Second. Remove Alderman, uh, Evans, second by Alderman Allen, that's, uh, seven dash three be passed as presented. Uh, there are some changes in the, uh, the funding though. Could, uh, Taylor, could you?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Be happy to explain. So at the last, um, economic, um, development, planning, and zoning committee meeting, there was a brief discussion about, uh, the allocations of these dollars. Again, these are, uh, future dollars that are to be determined upon passage of, uh, federal budget for it, but, um, uh, there was discussion about the kind of physical presence of some of these institutions being in North Chicago or not. And based on that conversation that was had at the committee level, um, staff wanted to propose, uh, a little bit of a shift in the allocations there that would prioritize those with a, a physical presence here in North Chicago. And so what we did was we took a, uh, pro rata decrease on some of those other agencies that did not have physical presence here in North Chicago, uh, without decreasing the Prairie State Legal Service for Fair Housing project item because that has a fair housing, uh, project component, which some of the CDBG funding is, uh, kind of required to have a component of, if you will. And so, uh, at the advice of Lake County, which helps us to administer our CDBG dollar program, uh, they recommended that that remain at the full ten thousand dollars. And so the allocations that are proposed there are, are in the packet there, but essentially it meant decreasing four, um, and then increasing one.
I know that, uh, Alderman Coleman, you led that discussion at the last meeting and, uh, you expressed how you thought it would be better, you know, or, or a good idea to try to get more funding to agencies that were part in, in, and actually were in the city of North Chicago. So I know that, that at this point, we did allocate additional dollars to, uh, youth bills, so.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman.
Uh, I'd like to thank my alderman for that support and allocating a few more dollars back to us. I appreciate the alderman for that. And Taylor, great job as well. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Any other questions or hearing none? Roll call.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith. Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
No.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, city bills.
Mayor Rockingham.
Alderman Allen.
I make a motion to consider approval of the city bills. Uh, we had two specials. And if you told, those all, the bills, this record city bill and the two specials, it was two million, twenty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixteen cents when it come available. Second.
Remove Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Evans, and city bills with the special reports, uh, be passed as presented. Are there questions on the bills? Alderman January.
Thank you, mayor. There she is. I was just gonna ask.
Hi, Alderman January.
Hi, how are you?
How are you yourself?
Good, good. Um, usual questions. Are there sufficient funds to cover this bill run and when will the checks be cut and sent?
There are sufficient funds in the account to cover the bill run. Checks will be cut tomorrow and sent on Wednesday.
Okay. And then, um, what is the liquid funding available in the water fund as of last Thursday?
Um, yes, three million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty cents.
And then, Mr. Treasurer, what's the none?
At market close today, we had one million, three hundred thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety cents. That's, uh, not, um, liquid.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Smith, Alderman Murphy, Alderman January.
No.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Motion carried. Miscellaneous business. Is there anything under miscellaneous?
Mayor Rockham.
Alderman Evans. Was it you?
Go ahead. Mayor, Mayor Rockham, I just want to, um, say this to enlighten, to let the council know and to let yourself know that when you appoint people to these committees, that what we should do, what people need to do for these committees is address that committee person with the ideas that they're bringing up and not go around trying to make decisions behind that committee person on, that's on the chairman. So maybe as we get ready to start a new journey in this, maybe it could be told and set forth that you're working together, that you're working as one, but don't try to go behind that committee chair and make a decision and you haven't even spoke to the chairman of that committee. Try working together. Let's make North Chicago work because there's a reason for things to be happening the way it's happening now. North Chicago is a great city, but we as a council people, we as, having the mayor sit up here, having the staff together, we have to work together. So please, to all my council members that's here now, all the ones that's coming on board, let's work together. Let's not try to do stuff behind somebody's back because it's not gonna work that way. But together, we can make things and make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Allen?
I just want to, uh, let everybody know that I got a ward meeting on April the twenty-sixth at eleven o'clock at City Hall. But, uh, I just, I'll be getting some flyers out sometime next week here.
You said the twenty-sixth?
Yeah, twenty-sixth at eleven o'clock at City Hall, yeah.
Okay.
And the second thing I want to bring up, uh, about we got a new business just opened up in our city.
about we got a new business just opened up in our city to thank this week. This mine. She just came in, opened up over here on Green Bay Road. So I just want the people to know that she's in business and she said, and she wants some people to come out and support her. So you wanna just stand, just let us see who you are, so. Mayor, I just want you to see her, so you know who she is.
He's been supporter, Mister Jackson, Taylor. Everybody's been very good to me and I just opened a Mia's Pancake House. And grill, um, oh, it's open. So um, we have some good stuff in there, breakfast and lunch and some dinners. January, come on in. Okay, um, thank you so much for your help and support.
Yeah, thank you.
This entire process. Thank you.
Alright. Alright, anything else? Alright, hearing none. Uh, we do have a executive session. Uh, and that is a executive session for five uh, ILCS one twenty-two, C-seven. Sale or purchase of security in investments or in uh, investments contracts. Five ILCS one twenty C- uh, two, C-eleven, C-eleven imminent litigation. And five CLCS one twenty-two, C-twenty-nine uh, audit matters. So uh, could I have a motion to go into executive session?
So move, go in a second session.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Murphy that we go into executive session. Are there any questions? Uh, roll call.
Alderman Jackson. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans. Alderman Allen. Alderman Smith. Alderman Murphy. Alderman January.
Right, uh, motion carried. Uh, residents and guests, we will be into executive session. We should be out shortly.
Be here longer than that.
Like to reopen our city council meeting, have a motion in a second.
So move.
They move Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Smith that we reopen our city council meeting. Um, any what? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. May I turn a me- a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Been moved by Alderman Allen, second by Alderman January, that the city council's meeting stand adjourned. Uh, any questions on the favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
Yeah, at this time, we'll call the Judiciary Committee meeting to order. Uh, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans. Alderman Allen. Alderman Smith. Alderman Murphy. Alderman January.
Okay, at this time, we have one um, item up on the agenda. And that is the discussion and review of Brookstone at Coles Park. And I believe Chief of Staff Jackson will be giving a update.
Mister Chairman, members of the Judiciary, I'm sorry, the Judiciary Committee. A brief update regarding Brookstone, regarding the surety, uh, the Brookstone people are waiting for an updated punch list from our engineers. Some work had been started over at Brookstone and completed, so our engineers are taking it away from the list, so we have an accurate list. Brookstone is scheduled to uh, start landscaping, pavement striping, installation of detectable warning stripes and benches. Uh, all to be done this month. Pavement patching is getting ready to take place in May. Uh, Brookstone is now represented by a new attorney. They also have had some recent violations regarding the fire system. Regarding the public safety plan, uh, there's an issue that private security that was supposed to be there on the weekends. Has been there sporadically and not consistently, so we're addressing that. They have put in a reservation system for the clubhouse. Unfortunately, the deposit to use that is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, exterior lights, uh, our police officers have been uh, patrolling within Brookstone and have uh, attested that the lights uh, have been uh, repaired. Monthly residential meetings are, according to Brookstone, are taking place, but we've come to find out that they're usually canceled the day before. And there's no consistency with the meetings. Suggestion box for the residents has been placed outside the clubhouse. The flock cameras have not been installed yet. And the complex vi- video security cameras have been. And um, uh, Brookstone is going to give our police department access to those cameras, but again, the flock cameras are not in. And there's still a lot of things from the safety, public safety end that needs to be taken care of. We're meeting again in adjudication both on public safety and code violations, uh, and I believe it's May eighth. Um, on the code enforcement side, they are still remiss in filing for their landlord licensing. I think the fines assessed right now is twenty-eight thousand dollars in fines. Um, they're scheduled for adjudication on April tenth on this issue. Uh, fifty-eight units require re-inspection from last year's certificate compliance inspection. Uh, involves correction to the air combustion for the water heaters in certain units. Uh, damaged streetlights need to be replaced and there's still a four hundred dollar uh, elevator inspection that's outstanding. Fire system, uh, we went out and found that the fire system was not operable. Portions of it correct. Portions of it, lines weren't charged. They didn't have a connection to a monitoring station. Uh, so at some point, I was told that the appearance was that they never activated those fire alarms. So, um, so we're aggressively going after them, continuing with the fines. And uh, and uh, eventually, hopefully, in in dealing with our attorneys. Uh, get that surety turned over or or at least have the surety company hire the appropriate people to turn around and remedy the punch list items.
Just one question.
Are there, uh, Alderman Allen?
Chief of Staff, I just wanna make sure that the last time I think they was charged fifteen hundred dollars, that's no money. So you saying twenty thousand, but they ain't paying that. They just keep on adding, but they come back and corrected some of their problem. They don't pay anything, so this ain't, this ain't you gotta get in his pocket now and make him start paying some more than that kind of money goes.
And we're working with the adjudication officer to put more bite on things and turn around and and we need to we're at a point now where we've got those seventy hundred and fifty dollar a day in abeyance that we have to turn around and say enough's enough, abeyance is over with, give us the money.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, Alderman January.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, wow, that's a long laundry list of issues. Um, besides the fact that the residents there don't face, feel safe. Now, I'm feeling unsafe for them in the fact that their life safety is in jeopardy. If there is no alarms for fire, no back doors to to get out of or whatever the the, I mean, there was such a lo- long line of fire issue stuff. What are we doing, gonna do about that? I mean, I don't wanna ever see families or residents being displaced from this building, but or this community, but I mean, th- this is bad. This is not good.
But I think the next course of action for us, uh, after talking to uh, legal about some of this is to uh, um, get the Lake County Housing Authority, because they're they're the next entity, but to go back and the mayor and I had meetings with the state um, Housing Authority. Director level, um, and in fact, one of the things they said to us, Alderman, was don't give up that surety, go after it. They wa- they walked the grounds and we're not happy with what they saw. Um, gave us direct access to them and this next step is, you know what, we've tried to be good partners. And uh, it's not being reciprocated. So that's our next step. And we, I I now, I don't wanna speak too far out of line, but it wouldn't be bad for us to find somebody else managing that property.
Well, and that's hopefully what the uh, Lake County Housing Authority can help step in and help us and and partner with us with this project, because this is not good. This is, this is life endangering.
Yeah, it it this
I'm not pleased to hear that.
This this organization has disregard for our community and disregard for our city and our residents. So we need to be aggressive with them.
Okay, alright, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Smith?
I I guess I'm just kind of, um, Alderman, uh, January's same note, this is sad that they're just coming in and just to the attorney, what uh, is there anything else we, it's like, you're in an apartment or mortgage, you don't pay, they put you out. Is there anything we can do, because like you said?
Uh-oh, sorry.
Is there anything else we can do to put more bite, to get something back, cause all to do it, the bill is getting higher and higher? I can't hear you, Mike.
Um, the best thing we, when we were looking at this earlier this year in January, when a lot of this came out, it may have even been last year. Um, one of the best hooks we had was the cooperation of uh, the Illinois Housing Development Authority and Lake County Housing Authority on cooperating with us to get them removed as manager of the property. Um, we've looked at a number of things, um, some of them very, you know, some of them make sense, others don't make sense. But staff is, Greg, you are in contact with Lake County and IDA on these issues. Um, that's probably the best avenue for us to at least get someone new in there. We were, based upon the conversations we had been having with their attorney. They were making progress on issues, but it seems like they just fell away again. And a lot of new issues have come up, obviously, and it's unacceptable. Their punch list, they wanted, they wanted us to agree to bring the punch list down to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we we fully, we had a seven million dollar surety bond. But uh, we fully recognize that what remains to be done is in excess of three million dollars. And uh, their attorney would like to have a sit down with us, but we're at the mayor's direction and and I know the council feels this way. We're 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 not, eh, we're not willing to sit at the table and and acquiesce to anything. They need, they need to do what they they promised this community they were gonna do.
So we're not land, we're not landlords. So do we have any power to kick out the management company? I don't think we do, so that's being said, so how can?
You know.
But we could put enough pressure on other individuals that does and make it hard for them. Uh, you know, I mean, uh, you know, as as we've been addressing these issues and and going to to them and trying to get compliance with them. They keep, as I look at it, slapping us in the face. You know, it's it's been something that we've been this housing complex that is there at Brookstone has been there for what, five years, six years now? Six years, they have not been, they're not in compliance. They're they're still, uh, uh, the permits hasn't even been finalized because of issues that are out there. As I said, that surety bond, we need to go ahead, get it, get it taken care of and get all the issues resolved. And 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 go to the Lake County Housing, make them aware. As uh, Greg said, you know, we have been meeting with people at the state level. They've even brought up the fact of maybe we should go to another management company. So I mean, those are the, those are what I think needs to be starting to be addressed now. Uh, if if Benoit cannot take care of this, let's let's find another a uh, uh, management company.
Mayor, I guess the question, when you say we find, that's what's throwing me off.
Well, it would be through the state, through Lake County, that would be their issue to if 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 they're know that Benoit is not being, not being a good management.
And how can we put the pressure on, and who do we put the pressure on to make that happen?
That's that's what we're doing now. We've already had conversations with the state uh, uh, Housing Authority, Lake County. Things looked like they were starting to move in a positive direction. All of a sudden, it started as the mayor pointed out, then it stopped, so now they're backing back off. We're turning around, going back at our state and and county partners. And as a side note, um, and I I don't know if Ms. Collins as as a, as a side note, Ms. Col- uh, Ms. Collins has had, uh, I I bring, I bring up Ms. Collins in this because I've had conversations with Congressman Schneider's office because of HUD money used to fund that project. We're trying to pursue any avenue we possibly can, and I know Alderman Allen met with the congressman and uh, with with Ms. Collins. And and had the discussion. So as we move with this, um, the deputy chief of staff or the congressman, Jay Kaplan, has asked me to keep him in the loop on the way and and then, you know, how do we turn around and exercise HUD if we need to exercise uh, HUD? And and IDA does the same thing too, so.
And then one more, one more thing. And just for clarif- just for clarification, did I hear you say that a lot of the fire preventive things are not in place?
Taylor, you wanna talk directly to it?
And the reason why I brought that up, because I I believe in being proactive instead of reactive. Let something happen, a kid, you know, something happened to a kid, cause of, you know.
We know.
That's correct. Uh, we've been doing fire inspections. It's obviously a very large property, so we've been doing those over the past week or so. Fire inspector um, has found that certain uh, fire equipment has been um, appears to be turned off. Um, valves simply in the off position as opposed to the on position. Uh, a lack of paperwork demonstrating and proper inspection of the alarm panels, et cetera. Uh, this does not impact the entirety of the facility, um, but certain of the buildings, yes.
Were fines given for those violations?
Uh, we're writing up the notice of violation right now, and so that's expected to go out probably and we have notified their attorney as soon as we discovered any instance of this immediately. Put them on notice saying that this is a an immediate uh, concern and and something that's uh, really frankly, an egregious violation. And needs to be rectified immediately, and they've they've been given that message as soon as we can find us.
Okay, so they get a fine. How does it work as far as a timeframe to get in the problem fixed? Let's say if the fire water turned off. Whatever, whatever the scenario is, but then now something happened, let's give them thirty days, but something happens in fifteen days. Now, that's gonna make us look bad as the city, cause we know about it, all of these witnesses are here. I mean, what can we do to expedite this problem, cause it's a serious problem? Now, maybe we don't have to ask, but I'm just saying, it's something we need to address.
It comes back also to elevating it to um, the other powers that be with this property.
We, as as mu- as much power we have as a municipality and a home room municipality, there are certain things that we, our hands are tied on. There's, there's no other way to say that. You got a piece of property here where the land is owned by Lake County. And the property is owned by Benoit and it's overseen by the Illinois Department of Housing. So where where we can turn around and start going after, we we have to do it through our partners and and leverage our partners, and that's what we're doing.
And all of those names you just mentioned, they are aware of these problems?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely. And I said, uh, IDA came out and walked the property. And they turned around and took a look at it and said, and that's, they, we went into a closed conference room with the IDA group, myself and the mayor. They didn't even bring Benoit into the room and basically said, you know, this is just not right. And and these things should have been done. Hang on to the surety. Gave us their direct contact information so we could reach out to them when we needed to. And again, as 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 was described by the city attorney, we started to see some movement and I think it, I, for whatever reason.
Smoke screen.
They turn, yeah, yeah, they turn around. Their their lack of caring for their residents is disgusting. No other way to say it. Uh, you know, I maybe shouldn't be saying it on the record, but I, the disregard is unacceptable.
Thank you. Alderman January.
I just a quick question. The uh, senior independent living building that's on Rankin there, is they, is that managed by the same group?
You're talking about the multi-story?
Alright, then I'm extremely concerned because I have, I go in there as a home health nurse. And there's times that I can't get a hold of my residents and I've called the mayor directly to say, hey, the the management's not even here, can't get a hold of them, uh, you know.
And and so they've got, that was one of the Yeah, that's one of the issues that got brought up to Alderman was um, they've got these hours that you call and then if you call after hours, the phone will go to a manager, but either the manager doesn't answer or there's Yeah, yeah, okay. So that, those complaints have certainly been shared with us as well, yeah.
Uh, cause I've had residents in there tell me also different things that, you know, like Mrs. Collins has shared with her community. Um, that are concerned of as well in that building, so. Um, that are concerned of as well in that building, so. And I've shared them with the mayor, so I just, you know, I wanna make sure that we're watching also that senior complex.
There is, there isn't a day that goes by, literally a day that goes by, that I'm not in a conversation with staff to give me an update on where we're at between fire, police, and code enforcement.
And you know, and I just, I know this isn't part of the conversation here, but I also want us to make sure. That collaboratively, as uh, Alderman, the city council up here, the mayor, our attorneys, our police department. Uh, we also need to keep eyes on Kukla Towers.
And Thompson.
And Thompson, um, same kinda issues as we heard tonight, that they're not able to call out, there, there's issues with the phone, you know. So we need to have the inspectors out there looking at those buildings as well.
We also put a, I, and I think I may have sho, uh, brought this up before, but we also put an inspector on on weekends.
Okay.
So.
Great, I appreciate that, cause I just, I wanna make sure people feel safe and know that their phones are working, that their fire alarms are working and. You know, is if that's not working, I.
We take it.
Yeah, I mean, that, that could be very scary, and especially as our um, geriatric population. Um, lives in, in those buildings, it's, it's gonna be very scary for them, so.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Hearing none, I uh, asked for a motion to adjourn the judiciary committee meeting at this time. Okay, it's been moved by Alderman Allen, seconded by Alderman Smith, uh, to adjourn the judiciary committee meeting, Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Alderman, Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith. Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
At this time, the judiciary committee meeting stands adjourned, thank you all.
Like to open up finance slash party committee meeting, roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Present.
And we've got one item agenda discussion of FY twenty twenty six budget. Is all you.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening. Laurie, I sent you a email, like when you were in executive session, I forgot I didn't send it to you earlier. For the PowerPoint. Uh, I'll have to go get it. I was sending email. I know, I think last year everybody was quiet.
Just give me.
Thank you.
You can keep talking, I'll go get it. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I think she said I can keep going, she's still recording, right, okay, alright, thank you, good evening, Alderman and Mayor. Um, attorney, um, we're here today for, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you, uh, a little late, so, uh, mind you, um, so we're here to discuss the fiscal year twenty twenty six. Budget for um, city of North Chicago, um. I did, I hope that everyone received the email that we sent out on, I believe Greg seen, seen. Sent it on last Tuesday, so that way could everyone have opportunity to look at it before the meeting tonight, give a little bit more time. Um, again, if you wanted to schedule a meeting one-on-one, uh, where we can go over some lines, if you have questions, please, by all means, schedule those meetings with myself. And then Greg more than likely will sit in on the meetings as well. So um, we, as we discussed this, this um, evening, we just wanted to go over the proposed budget and the projected ending of the budget for this fiscal year. Um, go to power page, uh, three of the PowerPoint. Uh, where it says revenue and general, general revenue here. Everyone sees that? So it's just giving you a summary of the revenue that we're expected to receive in for twenty fiscal year twenty twenty five, which is thirty four million sixty three thousand four hundred and forty one dollars. Um, that's what we're projected to receive for this fiscal year, um, by the time April thirtieth comes in. Um, and then we have our proposed budget for revenue coming in for general at thirty two thousand, uh, I'm sorry, thirty, thirty two million four hundred thousand, uh, five hundred and thirty six dollars. And then of course, it just gives you a breakdown of the actual from fiscal year twenty three and twenty four. And then um, in your actual budget is a breakdown of all the line items along with the details that make up the numbers that you have there. Alderman Coleman. Okay, uh, the next one, uh, we have is our expenditure by department, uh, what we're expected to uh. Again, spend for the end of the fiscal year, so we're coming in at thirty million, um, eight hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and seventy nine dollars. Um, so of course, that's uh, less than what the revenue is coming in, so that's a positive for us. Um, anytime we have money that we're uh, exceeding in revenues, and that mean that we're able to fund our capital projects. And then for the fiscal year twenty twenty six, we do have anticipated revenue, uh, expenditures of thirty two million, one hundred eighty one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. And that's for the general fund. So we, if you have questions, we can ask questions about the general fund if you wanted to now before we move on to water. Okay, keep going, okay, perfect. The next one we have is our, uh, water revenue expenditures, uh, the top line on this, again, it's, it's fiscal year of actuals for twenty three, twenty four. Um, and then anticipated what we're gonna end the budget with for twenty twenty five. Um, currently for twenty twenty five, our projected amount that we're gonna end the year with, it is gonna be, it's gonna be um, a little bit under budget this year. Um, with all of the uh, water uh, revenue coming in, it looks like it's gonna not hit budget this year. Looks like it's gonna be about fifteen mil, million six hundred ninety six thousand and fifty five dollars is what the projected year end is gonna be for this fiscal year. And then, and again, that number was so high because we, in this fund, we also had the uh, sixteenth and Kimball project. So we were receiving um, um, loan proceeds into that fund, um, so if you look at twenty twenty six, the revenue is gonna significantly drop. Um, because this is actually just gonna be regular revenue to receive it in, cause we're no longer going to receive the funds from the sixteenth and Kimball project, cause that project is over with. Okay? Keep going. Okay, alrighty, and then so the projected for um, the expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty five. Uh, it's gonna come in at about eighteen million nine hundred eighty three thousand one hundred and twelve, and again, that is less than what was budgeted. Uh, for twenty twenty five, so our, that's a good thing, so we're not expended ex, as much as we expected for the year. And again, our expenditure for the next year is also gonna come down to seven million, um, eight hundred seventy six thousand one ninety five, and again, that because. There's a big drop under the capital projects because the sixteenth and Kimball project is done now. And so that's the, for water, if we had any questions for that one. Okay. And then we have our special funds that, um, that relates to, the first one is the grant fund, um, again, the grant fund right now. Um, we have uh, anticipated, we anticipated ending the fund balance of. I'm sorry, revenue, uh, six hundred ninety three thousand one eleven is what we're expected to end revenues with, and then expenditure is gonna be six hundred forty eight thousand five hundred and twenty two dollars. We're still waiting in the um, in the rev, in the revenue side, we're still waiting on reimbursements. Um, so hopefully at some point, we'll be able to receive the reimbursement for the grants that we're waiting on, um, to be able to collect, to add that money to our, our, our um, revenue fund. Um, for projected for next year, there is, uh, as you can see, yes, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, you, you hit the bill of what I needed to know, the word grant funds.
Mm-hmm.
Um, under the current administration with what they're doing, is that going to affect us in any way that we know of?
Um.
Of hand or, and I, I'm not trying to put you in a spot.
You're not putting me on the spot, we've been discussing this since everything that's been happening, at this point, yes, it's anticipated, it will, it, it will affect us. Um, there are some grants that, that normally come from federal, um, that the city applied for. At one point, we were approved for, to my understanding, we're being told there's a possibility that we will not receive those funds, a strong possibility that we won't receive the funds.
We've had uh, continuous dialogue with Senator Durbin's office, Senator Duckworth and Congressman Schneider's office. Uh, we had money set aside for the Broadway project, uh, the current administration pulled that money. Uh, we had money for C D B G for sewer lining, uh, that money appears to be pulled as well. Uh, anything that looks like it was part of our um, community uh, funding programs. Radios, other equipment that we were looking to do and some infrastructure. When uh, the Trump administration made the cuts with this budget that they continued, all those monies were taken.
So, oh, oh, I'm sorry, do we have a, a, a total amount of what our potential losses would be of hand?
I was, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Alderman, could you say that again?
I said, do you know how much we may have lost on, on the grant?
Yeah, I have a, I have a full summary of uh, uh, potential losses of money, uh, on, on the grants that I can provide the council and uh, provide it by project.
Please.
I just had uh, a lot of that data assembled, so.
Alright, thank you, thank you Chairman. Go ahead, Alderman Evans, so the project that's being done over there by Neo School, the, the retention by, all that stops?
No, some of that money we've already received, so.
So, the part that, that we didn't receive, you gonna, you gonna share with us?
On the.
When you say you're not gonna do, finish Broadway, those curves and every, that street, are we doing any other streets?
Uh, stuff that's in the uh, things that were already in the motor fuel tax dollars, but i- if that's what you're asking.
No, I'm asking, are we doing any other streets, since we're not doing Broadway, so we're not gonna do no streets in the city? That's my question.
Yeah.
Broadway is a capital project.
Capital projects you talking about?
Yeah, the ca, yeah, Broadway was a capital project that came, that, that was being funded by Congressman Schneider.
Right.
We're getting that money through there.
Right.
Other roads will get repaired based on state funding, motor fuel tax dollars, the things that we do normally there.
Right, so that street can't be fixed by state funding?
If we're talking about shifting the priorities on, on where that funding is going, those are discussions that I guess the council can have.
He- here's the reason I'm asking, is because that Broadway project that was going on, we, I know it's, we, we got it through the grant. But that street hasn't been done in years, years. The residents over there do deserve to have a street fixed. Now, I understand that we've got other streets in the city to fix, but to say that we've been telling these people that that street is gonna get fixed. To pull it now, and say, well, we gonna, we, we making adjustments, we can make adjustments all the way around. So you're gonna make adjustments on, on, on those other streets, you can make adjustments and tell them, no, we're not gonna fix them. What, what needs to be done right there that we started? No, I'm asking.
I, I know, Alderman, we, let me say this, first of all, the, the one point five plus million dollars that we were gonna use for Broadway was per. The, the problem is the, the, the current administration in Washington cut it off. The rest of the money, there is not, there's a finite amount of money, and, and I guess what I would say is this. I appreciate what you're saying about Broadway, cause we went out and tried to do a little patchwork on it last year to, you know, make it somewhat drivable because of the problems it had.
Exactly.
With, with the plan of moving Broadway forward this year. The decision on what the council deems is, is the priority for the roads sits with the council. The council needs to tell us, we are gonna do Broadway and we're gonna forego Fourteenth Street, or we're gonna do Broadway and forego Argon, what? That's, I guess what I'm saying is, we've got a finite amount of money, whatever the council decides, it, it wants us to do, our engineers and our staff will m- make it work.
Okay.
But that.
Is Argon getting done?
No.
Okay, what we did with Argon, I, I, I'll remember this, when we did Argon drive. When we did Argon drive, we didn't fix the, we did not fix it, we put the blacktop down. We ran that blacktop from Green Bay back down to Jackson. Why can't we do the same thing, since we're gonna be putting a, put a hole? Why can't we do it from Jackson to Grove? Of doing the blacktop itself, we're not gonna fix it totally like we should.
We can, we.
Well, all, can I?
Go ahead, man.
One, one of our concerns on that though is Alderman, is to even expense that type of money to, to just put a resurface. It, it, it wouldn't be feasible because we need to go in there and actually put sewer lines, I mean, you know, storm sewers in.
Right.
And, and if, if we put that type of money as just to, to do a, even a one lane resurface. And then come back in a year or so to, and, and put some storm waters in, that's, that's.
But you're not gonna come back in a year, you already, you've been waiting almost ten years for this street to get fixed. That's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about.
Alright.
We've been waiting ten years, ten years for the street to get fixed, and now I understand that other administration that's coming up, but. What you're saying to these people is, we're not gonna fix your street, but we're gonna fix everybody else's street. We only asking for one street over there.
Alderman.
We ain't asking for the whole ward to be fixed.
That's four blocks, five blocks of them.
We asked for one street.
That's one street, five blocks.
This is one of those, don't kill the messenger things? No, Alder.
Well, I, I wanna see what's gonna get fixed, cause wherever's getting fixed, I wanna see if it's wor, if it's worse than Broadway.
Alderman.
It should, it better be worse than Broadway, or it's not getting fixed. I'm gonna go out there and protest the whole thing, I'm telling you, because my street, that street should be fixed.
Ald, Alderman, when, I cannot begin to tell you the dissatisfaction that myself and staff had. With, with what happened to us with our money being pulled, because it was a significant amount of dollars.
That should make sure.
Um, and, and conferring with Bob that the program for what streets that would be repaired under the capital, under the motor fuel. Has not been, has not been identified yet.
It should.
So, 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 so there's time for us to have conversation, I guess, is, is what I'm trying to say.
We'll have a conversation from the January.
I will be hiding now, thank you.
Okay, no, don't go too far.
No.
You're gonna love this one. Alderman Evans. Despite our differences, I agree with you about that, that road.
Yeah.
It needs to be done, I have traveled that road many times and nearly broke my car.
I can imagine.
I agree with you that, that is one of the roads that I feel needs to be really looked at.
Thank you.
Urgently, um, just not only for the residents there, but the whole city going through there, cause it's, it is kind of a main. Throwaway that's been used quite frequently, so I agree with you.
We were putting a light, light project together for Meadow.
If I was here yet, I would vote for it, okay?
Well, thank you. We'll, we'll hope the next person will vote for it.
I'm going to.
Alright, good, alright, go ahead. Yes, I.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh.
I had a question, um, are those dollars allocated in the alleys as well?
No. The alleys come out of a different um, area.
But if the Broadway project was being done, with the Broadway and the alleys come out the same project, out the same bank?
Oh, you mean the, the alleys that's for Broadway, you mean just for the whole entire city?
Uh, for the second ward. We just fighting for our wards up here, so I'm fighting for the alleys, cause I got some alleys, and I don't care about Broadway. But we got an alley on Seventeenth and Grove, and we can use that blacktop in the alley. So, I mean, I gotta do my job as an Alderman, I, I love my brother here, but um, we need some blacktop and some alleys on the second ward.
That's your right.
I have a great idea, it's our budget for part of that, how about pay, we'll pay for it, okay?
So the alley program is allocated for a hundred thousand dollars, I don't know if that's gonna be enough to do a street, so, just FYI.
Can, can we add some more to that?
I mean, that's a possibility, that's up to the Alderman.
That, that's what I'll be fighting for when that comes around. Thank you. I think everyone up here is wanting to, to make sure we all do our ward. We just gotta compromise on some thing, but anyway, but I won't fight for mine just as hard as anybody else. So, it all, it just only one, um, we all fighting for the same thing.
Sorry that I brought up the grand fund.
But I do have, I have, I do have two questions.
Yes, about the grand fund, or just in?
In general, I wanna make sure I'm appropriate, um, can I get recognized, Chairman? The Sheridan, uh, Electronics for the Alderman. Um, I don't know when's the right time to bring that up, but I know the new incoming Alderman, they'll need like tablets and they're like twelve hundred dollars. Um, is there something in the budget that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, alright, now, I haven't got my tablet yet, so have we included my tablet out of that budget as well, so I won't have to?
But your budget is fiscal year twenty-five, so that, that's not twenty-six, just FYI.
Alright, correct, but I'm, I'm like in the middle, cause I haven't got the tablet, but I don't know if I paid for it, but he said it's taken care of. And the last thing is, um, Sheridan Road, when it comes to allocating dollars to Sheridan Road, not the road itself, but as far as the buildings, the appearance, the aesthetics of Sheridan Road, when would be the appropriate time to speak on that, is that now? For the Appearance Code, and do you know that dollar amount for the record?
I think it was twenty thousand, let me go look, hold on one second.
So it's, uh, so we've allocated, which is a great news, twenty thousand dollars to Sheridan Road to research and get into the appearance. And what we're trying to, and what that's in a nutshell, what that's saying is, we're trying to get Sheridan Road to look uniform. And we have to put some money into finding out which ordinances that we need to create in order to make Sheridan Road, um, more vibrant, right? And we've been working on that now for, um, about a year, so that's something positive for the residents of North Chicago in this year's budget. Um, and as far as Sheridan Road, it's as we're talking about the grant project, I know Sheridan Road had, um, Waukegan was getting a grant for a hundred million dollars for their lakefront project. And we were, uh, trying to get a connection piece of that for like ten million or something, I believe Steve, our engineer spoke on it. Is that out there?
I think you're talking about the Sheridan, uh, corridor project. The Sheridan corridor proj- uh, uh, corridor project is, uh, we just submitted from addition for some, I should say, we in collaboration with Waukegan. Waukegan's the lead on it, uh, just provided us with documentation today, I got it from the Chief of Staff in Waukegan. Uh, of the filing for securing additional grant money for the study, um, for the quarter.
And with this new administration, is that still a go, green light?
Absolutely is.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, uh, Alderman Smith. Just in case I overlooked, I wanna, um, let this moment go by without asking. We had money tha- that was, um, previous on, in our budget for lobbyists, have we got to that part yet?
Uh, it's in the general fund, yes, it is, we went to that part, you, you got a question about it?
It's still in, I just wanna make sure it's in there, and then I just wanna say, you know, that we know I'm leaving, but let's use that money. Cause we just, we keep letting it sit there and we don't use it, so I think it's important that we do get some lobbyists in there to speak for us on our behalf. I just came from Lobby Day and talked to a few people there, but I think it's important. We've been having that money there over and over and over, but we don't use it, I just think it's important that we get someone there to speak for us on our behalf.
We, uh, we had the same amount of money and we kept it in the same place, um, that the, uh, council asked. And, uh, we're prepared to bring some, uh, credentials to the council in probably the next thirty days. Uh, to look at and then potentially have discussions with potential lobbyists.
Awesome, thank you. Question, how much money do we have for the lobbyists?
Hundred and fifty thousand.
If we don't find that lobbyist in six months?
We're going to take care of Broadway.
Just thought I'd bring it out there.
Alright.
Okay, um, next fund, motor fuel fund. Fun for the roads, um, so for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, we're anticipate, we're anticipating on receiving revenues of one point, um, I'm sorry, one million six hundred twenty thousand eight dollars. Uh, expenditures are expected to be one million eight fifty-six, one forty-five, uh, for this fiscal year. So it's gonna bring the fund out, fund balance to about, uh, two million eight hundred ninety-nine thousand eight thirty-six. Uh, and then we're anticipating next year's revenues to be slightly less than what, um, what we received in, as well as the expenditures to be slightly less.
Now, why is that one of this?
So, when we receive information from, um, when we do our estimates on revenue, we use the funds, um, the estimates from IML. The Illinois Municipal League, and they anticipated motor fuel tax was gonna be down, um, this fiscal year. So that, and we use their numbers protecting off of that. So they give us a certain amount per Kappa, how many people we have in the community, and so we just use their, their number that they estimated, uh, to come up with our figure. Yeah, it is.
That's why I tell people today, when you go to Wisconsin and buy your gas up there and stuff, that's that motor fuel tax fixing those roads, am I right or wrong? I'm just letting you know, when they go up to Wisconsin, buy your gas up there, that tax dollar going up there, it ain't going in, in this Illinois. I just want the people to know that, cause they think, I'm getting cheaper gas, my road need to be fixed, oh, you want the road fixed? I'm just sharing with the people so they'll know what that motor fuel tax is all about.
Yeah.
Where it come from, thank you.
You're welcome, um, any questions on motor fuel? The, the streets are still to be determined, Alderman.
We'll see.
We have a set amount in there for the amount of the streets, so whichever ones are decided, is just what's decided, the amount doesn't change.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you.
Okay, no problem, um, the next one we have is, uh, Community Development, um, Block Grant Fund, uh, which is the CDBG Fund. Um, for this fiscal year, we're not anticipating receiving any, uh, revenue in, and, but then we did have expenditures uh, for the, uh, sewer lining, um, there were funds that was left over, so that we received in prior years, and that's what we utilized in order to, uh, pay for a portion of that program. Uh, for next year, um, the CDBG Grants Fund, I believe it's also affected by the yeah, by the cuts, um, it was one of the items that's also in that list. Um, so we are still anticipating on receiving some revenue, um, but nowhere near what we were expecting. On that one, so we did, we do have, uh, for twenty twenty-six, we have a revenue expected of thirty-nine thousand four hundred eighty-three. And then we still have expenditures that's expected to be spent of a hundred sixty-seven thousand, uh, four hundred and eighty.
Okay.
Okay, um, the next funds are the Federal Forfeiture Fund. Um, that one, it's a, it's a fund that generally has to do with, uh, police services, so it's the next I think two funds will be related to police. Yeah, that one, okay, the Federal Forfeiture Fund, so that one, uh, revenue there is generally just, uh, interest that we receive in. And expenditures is, um, the eighty-four hundred dollars, which that might be for, oh, that's for the building, the police building that we, um, rent on Ten Street. Um, so for us to pay rent there, and then again, for the upcoming fiscal year, we have twenty thousand one twenty-three that's expected to receive in for revenues and about twenty thousand four hundred, um, that we're expecting to, uh, spend in that fund. Any questions about that fund? Okay. Uh, the next one we have is our TIF funds, um, as you know, um, Downtown TIF actually closed this recent, um, no, it closed in February of twenty twenty-three. Um, so that fund will at some point be zeroed out, uh, once all the expenditures are paid through that, for that particular one. Um, so the only thing that we're receiving in right now is two thousand dollars, um, that we're anticipating to receive in for fiscal year twenty twenty-six is about two thousand dollars for interest.
Yeah, um, let's go ahead. Um, two questions. Um, when you say that fund's gonna be zeroed out, are you talking about the thirty-one thousand?
Uh, the hundred and eighty-two thousand is in, which fund are you on?
That's leftover money?
That's TIF money, that's that money we can do anything with size related to it. So it would be, it will go towards projects that's ongoing, that's in the TIF fund, that's in the TIF district.
Okay, is Broadway part of that TIF district?
Uh, for Downtown TIF, no.
No, okay, close, but no cigar.
And then for, um, the next TIF fund, which is the Sherden Crossing Fund, at this point, we have no revenue or expenditures that's allocated for that particular fund, however, um, once there is some movement on maybe Sherden Crossing, we will anticipate on, in the future, having some funds there, so that fund will at this point remain open. Uh, with the hopes of us have, being able to get Sherden Crossing cleaned up. Uh, and then the next one is the Skokie Highway.
Go ahead, Alderman Smith, can you elaborate on that? I thought we had some money for that.
We do, that's in the Capital Fund, um, so we have two grants that's, I think Lake County is the one that's spearheading that one. Um, it's about six million dollars, um, four is coming from.
Brad Snyder, Congressman Snyder.
But that's not, wait, it's two different grants.
Two diff-.
From the states.
Two different grants, four million from HUD for remediation, two million from DECO that was supposed to be infrastructure that they got approved to convert for remediation. So we've got, uh, that money's.
That's sitting in the grant fund, so that's six million dollars that you're seeing there, that's what that's for.
I guess the question came when you said, when we get the money that we'll start the cleanup, that's what threw me off.
Well, we've got to turn around and we're working with Lake, Lake County's the administrator of that money. So, once, once Lake County secures the money from HUD, money's already set, no, that one's set. They were gonna use it for Broadway, but wanted to do this instead. So, yeah, so we're fine, we're, we're looking to potentially, uh, begin remediation this summer.
Thank you.
And just for clarification on that, Alderman Smith, oh, I'm sorry, you might have.
Is this grant the one that we have to like pick up, pay first and then it reimburses us? Or they will give, the money will be in our account to help pay the?
Yeah, Lake County will be, yeah.
And then Alderman Smith, just to go back, cause I know that part might have confused you, this, this is actually for, um, the actual Sherden Crossing is gonna be one project start to work. Um, when we have something built and things like that, that's when you're gonna see expenditure and revenue coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have the Skokie Highway, um, TIF for that particular TIF. Um, we're anticipating to receive revenues of one million eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Expenditure going out is a hundred and two thousand six forty-six. Um, and then that shows the ending fund balance for fiscal year twenty-five. Uh, for next fiscal year, we do have revenue expected to come in about a hun- eight hundred and sixty thousand. And then expenditure going out about a hundred thirty-five, five forty. Okay. And again, that's the TIF, so that one, you would be, that would get all the be used for TIF related projects. Okay, and then the Grant Operating, um, Fund and the Grant Capital Fund, again, those particular funds are, um, are no longer being utilized, we still have them there because there's still fund balance there, once they clear out, then they'll no longer appear. And we'll come to the, um, council request for those funds to be closed.
Okay.
It would be moved over to general, yes, absolutely. Okay, for debt services, um, just waiting on Lori. That's okay, yeah, um, yeah, next one. Okay, um, so this one is for the debt that we had, of course, we know that, that debt was recently, was paid off in twenty twenty-three, I believe. December twenty twenty, no, I'm sorry, December of twenty twenty-two or three, I'm sorry, my dates are off, but, um, the debt was paid off already. Uh, for, so fifty, what we have in there, the four hundred and eighty-eight dollars is just carried over, same thing for the, um, for the Grant Place Debt, uh, we anticipate and received in nine hundred sixty-eight thousand eight twenty-three. And we paid out nine hundred sixty-six thousand three thirty-five, we do still have, um, debt payments for that particular, for Grant Place Debt, um, so we're anticipating on nine hundred seventy-four thousand seven twenty-nine for, um, principal payments of the debt. And then, uh, expenditures of nine sixty-five, five fifty-eight, I'm sorry, tax revenue coming in on that one. Did you have any questions about the, um, the Grant Place Debt? Okay. Okay, uh, the next one is our, uh, twenty fourteen, um, debt service, again, this debt was already paid. There was some, still some projects that's ongoing, that's going to, um, basically, uh, utilize the money that's left in the, in the fund balance. So that, that balance, once the projects are done, there won't be that balance any longer, and the same thing for the two zero zero seven B. Okay, uh, the next one, the next two funds are internal funds, um, that we have, uh, one is the Vision Fund. So for Vision, our anticipated revenue for fiscal year twenty twenty-three was seventeen thousand two twenty-eight. Uh, our expenditures going out is gonna be twelve thousand two fifty-four, um, so that's the fund balance at the end of April thirtieth. And so our revenues for this year is anticipated to be sixteen thousand, uh, sixty-one dollars. And then the expected expenditures will be, um, fourteen thousand, again, that's just for the Vision Fund, because the city is self-insured. So we put money into that fund to be able to play the claims. And then the next one is the Retiree Fund, again, that fund or the expected revenue coming in is gonna be two hundred eight thousand seven ninety-five. Expenditures expected is a hundred fifty-six thousand eight oh seven, uh, for this fiscal year. Uh, for next year, we're anticipating a hundred and eighty-three thousand in revenue and expenditures to be about two nineteen four sixty. Okay, um, as you could remember, in two thousand and two or one, sorry, my years are kinda off right now. Uh, we created a budget pension, I'm, I'm sorry, a pension reserve fund. Um, so this year will be the first year that we will transfer money into the new fund for the, um, the pin- the pension liability, so we, I think we have to have fifty percent of what the expected, um, liability be for the following year for the pensions. Um, and so we, over time, will build it up to be mo- more than likely about, probably about a little bit, about three point five million dollars. So for this upcoming fiscal year, we're anticipating that we're gonna, uh, transfer one point three million dollars, and again, that money is coming from mostly the, uh, casino, uh, funds and as well as the home real sales tax.
Hey, Alderman, January?
If I may, I would just like to recommend, um, that if possible to earmark that five hundred twenty-one thousand three hundred ninety-two dollars from the Grant Place Capital Fund. That's gonna be moved over to the General Fund, is to place that into our pension. So that we can get this pension obligation down as quickly as possible. Let's take where we've got some money that's gonna be, um, coming back in. Let's use it appropriately and get this funding for these pensions down. Otherwise, we're gonna have some issues coming down the road from federal and state, so, um, especially state, so. Let's not keep picking the can down the road, um, as we've all been saying for many, many years. Let's tackle this, um, this is huge, we need to get that pension down.
Alderman, I apologize, I misspoke when I said that was gonna go into the General Fund, that will not go into the General Fund, that's gonna go to payments for the debt for this Grant Place, I apologize for that, yeah, so it's not, I'm sorry, it's not extra funds, I apologize for that. Yeah.
Good question. Go ahead, Alderman Smith. As a suggestion of, so we can stop kicking the can down the road. Um, the casino got approved to do the full layout of the casino. So we're gonna get, could we get a percentage of the money that they make? So I will make a suggestion that that extra money that we're going to be getting, that we take and put that money towards.
It's already allocated. Yeah, so everything we receive for the casino and everything we're seeing for home rule sales taxes is being allocated to the pensions.
Just gotta get them more. That's what we get. They lose it. Yeah, I ain't gonna play, sir.
Okay, and then the last fund we have is the Library Fund. Of course, we know that they, uh, prepare their own budget and they basically send it over to us with the, uh, for us to file it for them. Um, with the exception of the, uh, property taxes. So for this year, the revenue was gonna be one million, two fif- two hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars. And then, uh, the expenditure going out is gonna be one million, four hundred seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. And then for next year, the anticipated revenues is gonna be six hundred twenty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars. And expects expenditure is gonna be one million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, nine oh two.
Any question? Great job to Wanda and your staff. That's all I can. Alderman. Go ahead. Maybe this is not the right question for you, but slash Greg, in the up since we're doing this money in our budget, how is our rating looking?
We haven't had an increase to our rating yet. We haven't went out and requested for a new bond rating at this point.
Okay.
Now, is it, are we anticipating on doing that? That would be a, a great question.
But, yeah.
We're not there on our discussions yet, but you know, certainly we want to turn around and have the pension fund, us paying down the pension fund because it is not kick, we don't wanna kick the can down the road to Alderman January's point. Um, that's gonna help us, but we put ourselves in a better financial situation. We're not quite there yet.
Have a projection? When we think you could get there to put a request in?
Yeah, I, I would be shooting in the wind if I gave you an answer, Alderman.
Are we aware of the bullet points that we need to get, to get us there to the next?
We are aware, we're, we are aware of what gets looked at in order for, for, uh, to talk about your financial status. Yes.
Working on.
Yeah, but.
All right. That's just like that audit report we do every year. When they tell us we need to do these, we ain't doing that, all that stuff we should be doing.
I, I, I will note this, that, um, it's been one year, seven months, three days and twelve hours, no, it's, uh, from the time I got here and some of the work my predecessor and, and his team did and Tawanda's team did, the, the progress that's been made over the last four years is marked. It's, it's, it's significant. So we keep this momentum and paying down that seventy, whatever, a thousand dollar or a million dollars in, uh, in the pension fund and keep moving this along, the city will be in a positive, it, people will be looking at the city saying, what did they do? On a positive note.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, Alderman January.
You know, coming out with this budget under a newer software.
This, the, the budget, the software doesn't, um, do anything with the budget. This is still done on Excel.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, this is.
We have to transfer stuff over to, uh, automated?
Yeah, so it, it's still, it's entered into the system, but there's not a mechanism for us can spit the numbers out for you. We put the numbers in and tell them what we wanted to have. Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Well, yeah.
Yep, yep. Go ahead, Alderman.
Um, this is for, uh, Mrs. Joanna. I had the privilege of watching you, um, start giving your budget the first time.
Mm-hmm.
And I just want to say that you're getting stronger and stronger and you did an excellent job with your.
Yeah.
Thank you, Alderman.
This year.
I appreciate that.
See your confidence, so keep doing a good job.
Thank you.
I concur.
Thank you, sir.
And the staff.
And the staff.
And Greg.
It takes a team.
It takes a whole team.
Takes a whole team.
And Greg.
Greg is the team.
All right. I, I.
And so I, Alderman, I would just ask if there's possible that we can put this on for a vote. Again, we are, we still have two weeks that we can work on it. If you have questions, if you need to add some, if you wanna talk about Broadway. But again, the Broadway, the money that we have set aside for motor fuel is the money that we have set aside. The street part, it really won't have anything to do with, with the, uh, actual budget. That's just, you know, that comes after to determine what, what streets we're gonna do. But by all means, if we could put it on for next council for a vote. But again, work in progress, anything that we need to update, change, questions, anything, please. Reach out. I did reach out to Alderman Coleman to see if you wanted a meeting, cause I know you were really, um, you know. So if you want a meeting or anything, I'm definitely available. Greg is available, uh, for any questions that you may have.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Um, what do we have to do to put it up for, now, if we put it up for a vote, we can always table it later.
I'm gonna put it on for votes in two weeks. So you can, anybody wants to go in and talk with what she's saying, come in and see her, what's going on for a vote. Move forward, thank you. Any more question? Can I get a motion? A second to close there? So moved.
Second.
Move out, Evan, second by Alderman Jackson. Roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
The Finance slash Audit Committee meeting is closed. Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna open up the Public Works Committee meeting. Roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Present.
I'm gonna discuss the resolution for renewal extension of AMM Enterprises and Corporation Services not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand for one year. No, I have one year. I know, I know what I'm saying.
All right, so. Right. I guess, I guess I should address, okay. This is a renewal of the contract, uh, for Bob Miller, who has been working in public works supervising and mentoring, uh, our current publics, our Public Works Superintendent, uh, Tommy Johnson. Uh, we're looking to full-time shift. Um, Bob, who's been overseeing, uh, Rob and his change to water super, water treatment plant superintendent. And, uh, office Bob in the water plant to directly oversee and mentor Rob as, uh, Rob continues to make progress, good progress too. He's, uh, getting ready to get a certification, so. Um, the, and contract proposed was initially twelve months at a hundred and twenty thousand. I took it down to six months at sixty thousand. Alderman Evans and I had further discussion and Alderman, uh, today, and Alderman Evans, uh, wanted to see it back at, uh, twelve months at a hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, the contract is in front of council, uh, looking to move forward with the, with the committee's approval to the, uh, City Council on the twenty-first of April. And I'll take any questions that the council may have.
Alderman Coleman. Thank you.
Um, no, no again, and no again. That's gonna be my vote and, uh, I'm sticking to it. Um, I don't even care what the dollar amount is. My answer is no. I do not feel that Bob Miller has serviced our community, um, to, especially for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, right? He served his time. He's did his job. It's time for him to go. The answer once again is no, and I'm done.
Anyone else? Yes, I, I can say, I, I had Chief of Staff, we had talked about some things and I just said, I thought we were done with the whole thing, but if, I said I'd go six months, but I wasn't gonna go with no more than six. Cause I think it's time for, if we need somebody, it just, I just think it's time for the guys to go ahead and get some help for six months and we move forward. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We'll put it on the agenda.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Okay, at this time, I would like to close the Public Works Committee meeting. Roll call. A lot more time. Oh, so moved. Seconds, yeah. Alderman Allen and Alderman January. Roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Um, I'd like to open up the Human Resources Committee meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Present.
Okay, we have one item on the agenda, discussion, management, government, GOB, HR, contract renewal for police department admini- administr- easy for me to say, administrative coordinator.
Mm-hmm, right. Good evening, Alderman. Um, this is just really, um, just a renewal of the contract. It's, nothing has changed with the contract. Um, and just basically, um, the first part of the contract was for six months. And then this is just the second part of it. And like I said, nothing has changed as far as the rate or anything else. I just need to bring it forward because the other contract ended, you know, in March after six months.
I, I actually do have a question.
Sure. That's fine.
May or may not be of interest to my fellow Aldermen. Um, so typically are the contracts in six-month increment? Like, is there a, is there an increment that we normally work in?
Right, usually it's about six months. Um, and then we just, we look at it and renew it and see, you know, at that time, do we wanna continue on with the person's services or not? And that gives us an opportunity to do that.
Okay, so there's a, there's a review along with a renewal.
Right, right, exactly. Are there services and like I said, right, exactly.
Are they, is there, is the position still needed?
Right.
Everything, is the performance still?
Still there, right, exactly. Right, exactly.
But typically, that's a six-month period.
Right, exactly.
Where, where it gets reviewed and then renewed or altered.
Right, that's what we usually have. I mean, for this kind of role, that's what we have and especially with the, the, the role and, uh, working with this organization. So I mean, we can, you know, if, for other positions, I guess if they wanna set at three months, they can and then review. But typically, it's about six months.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I, I thought I had a pretty good feel for it, but again, I think maybe it helps everybody to know that that's the, that's the procedure. These aren't just automatic.
No, no, not at all.
Thanks. Okay, um, I would like us to move this then to the agenda for next meeting.
Okay.
And if there's any questions?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so, uh, like to get a motion to close the Human Resources Committee meeting.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Alderman January, seconded by Alderman Jackson. All in favor or we, uh, roll call? Let's do all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, why did I say? It's actually not, it's, it's not a bad idea at this point if we could, if this helps us move things over. Nope.
All right, I'd like to, I would like to open up Economic Development Planning and Zoning Committee. We have three items on the agenda. Discussion of sixteen oh six Sheridan Road, special use permit. Um, El Dante, uh, uh, Adelante Center of, um, Entrepreneurship. Discussion of twenty-five, twenty-five Green Bay Road, special use permit, YBLC Incorporated. Discussion of inter, intergovernmental agreement for abandonment proceedings, Northern Illinois Land Bank. Taylor. Oh, oh, you're, you are.
Called to open.
I'd like to, yes, roll call, please. We open the, yes.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Present.
All right, now we'll move forward. Taylor.
Sounds good. I'll just briefly introduce, uh, each of these items, um, as they come up on the agenda. But this first one here is for, as, as noted, special use permit, uh, for the Adelante Center for Entrepreneurship. Um, this is to operate a community resource center at the property sixteen oh six Sheridan Road. That's the former restaurant that's out there. Um, this did go before the Planning and Zoning Commission earlier this, or last month. For, and they gave a unanimous recommendation for approval with conditions. Those, uh, conditions are noted in the packet that, uh, was distributed prior to this meeting. Um, basically, to summarize those, for this petition, it is hours of operation. Um, eight AM to eight PM is the maximum hours of operation. That would be non-transferable. So if there was a different type of, uh, operator, it would not transfer to them. Um, limiting the installation of any accessory structures, that would just be limited to the, the building itself that's out there. If a drive-through was ever introduced, that would require a separate special use permit. And then also a condition was added, um, that if there's ever a traffic congestion problem, um, this, I'm sorry, I, I didn't mention. This is more or less a, a food pantry use, uh, but it, in our zoning ordinance, that's considered a community resource center. Um, and so if there was ever a traffic problem, uh, the city could request a traffic study at that time. The operator would be required to provide that. If they did not, uh, the City Council could take action to, uh, revoke the special use permit. So we do have the petitioner present here. If there's any questions about the specifics of this petition.
Yes. Alderman January.
Are they matching this particular location or is it?
This would be a rent. They, they currently have a lease agreement for the property.
Alderman Coleman.
Mr. Chairman, um, currently there's a parking, um, dilemma over there because they share the parking lot with the apartment building, um, sixteen ten Sheridan Road. And as, is that the correct, the same building, OJJ's, right, sixteen oh six?
Correct property, yeah.
And then on the other side, um, as that building begins to fill, there's no parking and it's kind of a parking jam right there. Um, I know it's neither. It, it's kinda a unique situation because it's neither the landlord's fault or the new tenant's fault. But what are we going to do about addressing the parking jam in that little corner right there?
Uh, to my knowledge, there's no written agreement to, uh, share that parking, or at least I have not seen one. And so those, I'm suspecting are just tenants of the apartment building who are parking within that parking lot, perhaps because it's been vacant for so long. Uh, and so there's no formal arrangement for those tenants to be parking there. So, um, as it considers this, as you consider this petition, um, I think that's kind of a separate factor. We, we could visit with that owner of the adjacent property, the, the apartment building.
Well, um, I've had a conversation with, um, both owners, actually. And what I'm trying to get them to do is work it out, right? Um, and figure out a way to work it out. And there's another parking lot, sixteen ten, that's adjacent to that. That's an empty lot that's owned by the laundromat, the same owner of the laundromat. And so it's kinda weird because all the parking is in one space. But then on the other side, we have an empty parking lot that no one ever uses. It's if you ever drive by the parking lot, um, it's got that gate, that chain where you can't actually get into the parking lot. And it's just, and on the other side of the building, um, is where at one time the, the apartment building was using both parking lots. And now when this new tenant has came in, it has forced the tenants to all consolidate into one, uh, parking lot. And the landlord has decided to increase the tenant's, uh, rent to reserve a parking lot. So they have reserved signs at sixteen ten Sheridan Road. So they have reserved signs at sixteen ten Sheridan Road in which they like fifty dollars, sixty dollars, because they can, best way to put it, they can do that, right? Um, so what I was trying to do was to see if maybe, um, they could work it out, right? And I don't know how this is going to pay a part. And they also have a Tesla charger that's there too, right?
There's an electric vehicle charger for the electric fleet that the, um, Adelante Center has.
Right, so they're gonna be charging their cars in that parking lot as well, right? So they're gonna have a fleet of cars and then they're gonna have their regular.
Two vehicles.
Can you come up to the front, please? Can you come up to the front, speak into the mic?
So we have three electric vehicles. We have a commercial van. We have, uh, two Teslas.
Right, and, and remember.
And two more vans.
Remember we had a conversation, right?
I did.
And I'm.
Did you get that Tesla?
No, I didn't, but I'm trying to figure out how this is on the council floor and you didn't call me.
I emailed you.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, um, is there any way?
Written record.
Is there any way that I can get an opportunity to talk to this gentleman here, um, with the, uh, before we put it on council floor?
Sure.
Okay.
Off line. For the record, what is your name?
Kenneth Barber. My executive director of Adelante Center for Entrepreneurship.
I like that first name.
Thank you.
Okay, so just for clarity, you're asking?
To spit table it and take it offline.
Sir, I'm not the owner of the property. I'm the, as he said, I'm the tenant.
Right. Were we supposed?
We did, but I, I don't have, I have limited control over decision-making of beyond just as the tenant. I, I'm constrained by the lease.
Okay.
Can any of your questions be answered tonight?
Okay, here's the problem. This is the second, uh, time that a business has came into my ward. Last week it was sixteenth and, uh, Sheridan Road, um, with the Lucky's Gambling, uh, thing that we had on the agenda. And, uh, it wasn't ran by me, and I believe I, I spoke and I let it go. I didn't say anything. But I think at some point that people are gonna have to reach out to their respective Aldermans before it gets to this point. And I just think out of respect, um, that businesses should be going through their Alderman. Now, if the council, um, feels that, uh, it doesn't have to go through their respective Aldermans first, then I'll agree with the council and I'll pass it. Um, I don't have a problem with it, put it on the agenda. But things are coming into my ward and it, it's not going, I'm not hearing anything about it. So, and I'm speaking to people, they're not calling me back. Um, I was, uh, at the, so on Sixteenth Street and Sheridan Road, I dropped my business card off as recommended. I still didn't get a call on it. I still voted on it. So, I mean, I, I don't want to hold up any businesses, but at some point, we gotta draw the line. And we have to make sure that, uh, the people on your wards, first ward through seventh ward, they come to the Alderman. And we have an opportunity to work these things out because it's unfair to me to be addressing this on the floor right now. When I have this gentleman and I could possibly have a landlord listening to me now, I could possibly have residents listening to me now. And, you know, I can't make everybody happy, but it's unfair for me to have to address this right now on the floor.
All right, point taken. We're gonna, let's do that. Okay?
Okay. On to the next item then.
Next item.
All right, so, uh, very similar type of request. This is twenty-five twenty-five Green Bay Road, a special use permit, uh, same type of use. Uh, Community Resource Center, at least as defined by our zoning ordinance, although the kind of, uh, understanding of what that use is a little bit different. This is for Youth Build Lake County. They are looking to, uh, purchase this property at twenty-five twenty-five Green Bay Road. Um, immediately move their, uh, facility that's currently on Kemble into this new location. Uh, they would retain Great Lakes Credit Union, which is the current, uh, occupant of that building and owner of that building. They would retain them as a tenant in a no- northern part of the building. And then, um, use the rest of the facility for their classrooms, for their, uh, workshop spaces, uh, for their offices, et cetera. And so this is a, uh, Community Resource Center, special use permit. The petitioner as well, uh, is here tonight to answer any additional questions. But again, unanimous recommendation for approval by, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission last month.
Alderman January.
Uh, finally question I have is, um, I know you've built this over in the, at the school building of the Green Bay. Is this like a move or an extension?
This is a full move. So their lease is expiring at the Kemble location, South, South Elementary, and they would be.
Ten years ago. Oh, okay, I did not.
Right. From South School, the, the Kemble location. They would be moving that to the new. Yes, correct.
All right, could you come to the mic, please?
May I pass out some? Absolutely. Tamika Wilson, Executive Director of Youth Build Lake County.
And how long you looking for your lease?
Along. Will be owning the building.
Oh, you're gonna, okay, gotcha.
Will be retaining Great Lakes Credit Union as a tenant.
Tenant.
Uh, this was their headquarters, um, and first branch in North Chicago, and they are doing a long-term lease with us. Um, in order to make sure that they maintain their presence in the community as well.
Any more questions? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Right. Next item.
All right, last item here, um, is the intergovernmental agreement for abandonment proceedings with the Northern Illinois Land Bank. Uh, as you may recall, we recently joined with the Northern Illinois Land Bank. Um, the Lake County Land Bank, uh, merged essentially with the Northern Illinois Land Bank, which is based out of Rockford. Uh, we actually had our first board meeting this past week, uh, which I attended. Um, part of the, we already have the intergovernmental agreement to effectively join the Northern Illinois Land Bank. But this additional agreement they brought to our attention is their standard agreement with all the members that are part of that organization, which basically gives them the authorization from the city to allow their inspectors to perform abandonment inspections. So if there's a, a suspected, uh, abandoned property, this would enable the Northern Illinois Land Bank's inspector to visit that property, document the situation, and then proceed with the abandonment proceedings accordingly, so.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Coleman.
Um, I want to address something else while the gentleman is still here. Um, and, but address this at the same time, um, in the future as well, Taylor. Uh, if something is coming to the wards, like the, the bank or, you know, Youth Build or whatever, or something's coming to my ward, right? If you can reach out to me, uh, or that respective Alderman as well. Um, it would be unfair for me to put all the responsibility on the business owners and not put any responsibility on us, right, as well. Um, communicating, so if it's anything that I can do to make our communication better or easier, just let me know. And, um, so that, uh, in the future, uh, we're on the same page, right? So.
Absolutely noted. Uh, if, if, if you could express your, your, uh, preferred method of communication, because I did reach out about that last matter, but, if there's a preferred communication, I'm happy to, to use that accordingly. Just let me.
Well, we'll talk about it offline.
Sure. That's fine, yep.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Are you closing?
Yes.
Uh, o- one more thing, um.
Alderman Coleman.
Yes, um, can, under building and economic, is there any way that we can give the chief, um, and the attorney direction to look into, um, look into licenses, banquet licenses? And chief, uh, if you can explain that, want to a little bit more into that?
Chairman Smith, the, uh, Alderman approached me about, um, having discussion and do some research with the city attorney on a BYOB, uh, license for the city. City currently doesn't have BYOB licenses, other communities do. Uh, just to provide some research and presented to council to get councils take, I'm sorry, to bring it back to committee, to get committees, um, take on, if they want to take a look at this, if they want to move it forward, whatever. An initial research is what the Alderman asked for.
Okay. Thank you. We'll put it on Alderman Evans.
Or BYOB on a flyer of mine. So what do BYOB mean?
Bring your own booze.
Bring your own booze?
Yes.
Oh, okay. See, everybody else had a different answer. Thank you. No, he just, I, I asked the Alderman over here. The Alderman said, bring your own booze. Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move it forward.
Any thoughts, one more quick question. Any thoughts from the mayor?
Okay.
All right. Alderman Allen. All right, thank you. All right, I get the motion to close Economic Development and?
Second.
Uh, move Alderman January, second by Alderman Murphy, roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
No, you ain't.
Okay, at this time, we'll call the Public Safety Committee meeting to order. Roll call please.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Madam Clerk, if you can, would you scroll up, uh?
Sorry, yes.
Yes. For us old eyes. Um, at this time, we have three items up. Number one is discussion and, uh, entering into a contract with, uh, municipal, oh, I love that. I had to turn that one. Uh, with Municipal Emergency Services, uh, Inc., for the purchase of, thank you. For the purchase of, uh, of a firefighter bunker gear, uh, not to exceed, uh, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and five dollars. The second item is a discussion entering a contract with, uh, Health Endeavors SC, uh, Inc., for the purchase of annual physicals for department personnel not to exceed thirteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. Third item, discussion and entered into a contract with Eagle Uniform Company for the purchase of duty uniforms and safety boots, not to exceed, uh, nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. And I believe Fire Chief, uh, UMAC is presenting tonight.
Uh, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Uh, the first one as, uh, stated is the discussion of entering into a contract with Municipal Emergency Services for the purchase of firefighter bunker gear or personal protective equipment not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and five dollars for the year. Uh, this is our structural firefighting gear from, uh, head to toe with replacement gear and anything else that is needed during the year.
So any questions on item number one? Um, if not, we'll move that forward if, uh, there's no objection to the next, uh, city council meeting for a vote. Second item.
Uh, the second item is discussion entering into a contract with Health Endeavors Incorporated for the purchase of annual physicals for department personnel not to exceed thirteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. These are, uh, annual physicals, uh, provide us a, uh, fit-for-duty certification.
Alderman January.
Is this the same company that you've been dealing with?
Yes, ma'am.
And has, um, any change in the pricing?
Uh, just standard, probably three percent, I would say, just, yeah, just cost of inflation, nothing major, no.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the council question for Chief UMAC on item two? If not, we'll put that on the next meeting agenda for a vote. And item number three.
And the last one is a discussion entering into a contract with Eagle Uniform Company for the purchase of duty uniforms and safety boots not to exceed nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. It's a, uh, standard yearly fee that was a, just a normal increase, same as, uh, above, yes.
Questions? No, any questions? All good? No. All right, and all three of these, uh, items listed have gone through the regular process of three bids and things of that nature that's required, correct?
Yes.
All right. Okay, um, that will also be moved forward to the general agenda for, uh, a final vote at the next meeting. Any other questions, comments, statements? Hearing none, I would like to request a motion to adjourn the Public Safety Committee.
Second.
Is moved by Alderman January, seconded by Alderman Allen, Ald- Alderman Evans. You know, y'all sit over there, you know, so, uh, to adjourn the Public Safety Committee meeting, so. Um, roll call, Madam Clerk, thanks.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
All right, the, uh, Public Safety Committee meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
All right, I'd like to open up the committee of the whole and have a roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Present.
Okay, I know that I am holding you between us and the NCAA game, but it's in the halftime. At the second half.
Really?
And the Gators are losing. But anyway, uh, not that I know that. But we have four items on the discussion tonight. Uh, discussion of finding and recommendations of the video gaming study. Uh, discussion renew extension of InterDove Management IT Service Agreement not to exceed a hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars for three, a three-year contract. Uh, discussion to, to buy local campaign and discussion of seventh ward, uh, representations. So, uh, Greg will let you start off with the, uh, gaming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, council, uh, to, just to start in reference to item number two, uh, Mayor, I would ask that that be tabled until the next council or a committee meeting. There are some language changes that, uh, the city attorney, uh, presented me with that, uh, we need to incorporate into that agreement. The, um, the video gaming study for the mor- the moratorium, the, uh, long-awaited, what were our findings? This should only take two hours. Um, so, next slide. All right, so the agenda, the agenda is set up very much like the presentation that, or the, uh, written study copies that I provided the council in electronic and, and hard copy format about two and a half weeks ago. There's an introduction, study questions, approach, data, findings, and recommendation. Um, next slide. The city authorized video gaming within the city limits, uh, in limited types of licensed liquor establishments through the creation of, uh, the municipal code. Uh, since the adoption of the video gaming regulation, the city council has been, has had documented growth in establishments with terminals, with terminals. Additionally, the staff, uh, city staff has documented clustering, uh, of these establishments. I provided in your package and as well as, uh, in the PDFs that went out, uh, uh, maps on, on where all the, uh, terminals are, both five and six station terminals. We're gonna start with the study questions, the explanation of the approach and research, design and figures and tables. Here were the five questions we asked when we were doing our study. Has there been a proliferation of video gaming establishments and terminals in the city of North Chicago? Statistically, how does the number of video gaming establishments and terminals in North Chicago compared to other communities? Statistically, how does the density of video gaming in our Chicago compared to other communities? What is the revenue impact of video gaming to the municipal government and licensees in the city of North Chicago? And is there a correlation between gaming and an increase in sales tax? We did this off secondary research, so what we basically did was take. Hard data, data that's established by credible authorities and took that data. Pertaining to terminals pertaining to population density pertaining to socioeconomic demographics. And then we aggregated that data and then turn around and analyzed it as was appropriate for not only North Chicago but other communities. So, next slide. So first I provided data on establishment since the issuance of the first licenses in twenty fifteen. The number of terminals increased from nine. To twenty nine, this was a, I'm sorry, yeah. Housing, the number of establishments, housing gaming terminals increased from nine to twenty nine for a two hundred and twenty two point two two percent increase. Next slide. Between twenty fifteen and year end in twenty twenty four. The licensee revenue increased from one point three million dollars to seven point two million dollars, which is a forty, four hundred and fifty three percent increase. Next slide. The dollars played in the city in twenty fifteen were twenty two point three million. Played in video terminals in licensed North Chicago establishments. It rose to a hundred and thirty two point nine million in twenty twenty two and then declined. To one twenty one point nine million at the end of calendar year twenty two. The municipal share of the revenue. Our municipal revenue share, the direct correlation between the number of licensed establishments, terminals and the amount played has resulted in increase in municipal revenues from ninety five thousand dollars in twenty fifteen. To five hundred and sixty two thousand in twenty twenty four, that's four hundred and eighty one point five seven percent increase. That's the revenue share, that's not even counting the licensing. To date, we have a hundred and seventy terminals at a thousand dollars a terminal, it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Bringing our numbers up to about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars in revenue a year from video gaming. I also later on will touch briefly about the push tax, which we estimate based on. Waukegan's successful. Court challenge. That they, that that will estimate to bring in approximately one point eight million dollars a year to the city, giving us about a total of two point five million of revenue.
Mayor, is that including the penny thing?
Yeah. Yep. Since twenty fifteen, the city of North Chicago revenues from gaming totaled four point twenty one million. With one point three million in licensing and three point one eight million in municipal share of gaming. So. I looked at, next slide, I looked at data density and demographic and I did an analysis and interpretation. So these are nine comparable populated Lake County municipalities as well as an individual data set for the neighboring city of Waukegan. This data also includes communities without gaming with Waukegan in the data. Set, the North Chicago exceeds the average number of terminals, the average number of terminals is seventy six and North Chicago has one seventy or one hundred and twenty four percent more. Without Waukegan in the data set, the average is fifty, North Chicago. Is two hundred and forty percent more. North Chicago has one gaming terminal for every one hundred and eighty one people and one for every zero, a point zero four seven square mile versus the average of a hundred and fifty seven. Terminal, or one terminal for a hundred and fifty seven at point zero five square miles and a hundred and sixty seven point zero five two square miles without Waukegan in the data. Again, this table includes nine comparable populated Illinois municipalities, not just Lake. The data also includes communities without gaming, North Chicago exceeds the average number of terminals, the average is a hundred and ten and North Chicago has one seventy or fifty five percent more. North Chicago has one gaming terminal for every hundred and eighty one people and one for every point zero four seven square miles versus the average of one fifty nine and point zero five eight. So what we're seeing here without having to go into much more about density is that. We've got, we've got terminals that are clustered in areas that, and. We have shorter distances. For square miles that we have terminals at, we also have more terminals than the average populated communities that I looked at. Also looked at data analyzation, analyzation to see if there was a correlation between gaming. You can go up for a few more to data density, I'm trying to get through this. Little bit easier on everybody, Lori. The, and city sales tax, which you hope is that gaming drives business into the community and when it drives business into community, there's a correlation. With an upward trend in sales tax, we're not seeing that necessarily in North Chicago. And part of that is where, where these terminals are located, I mean, that's, that's a big part of this. You can go to the next one, keep going. Keep going. There you go. So there's the map of the clustering, again, councils had, had the information for a couple of weeks, so I'm, I'm assuming it was reviewed. Our findings and recommendations and Taylor worked on this with me as well. Most video, video gaming licenses have been issued to gas stations, convenience stores or video, video game parlors. These are generally uses which have not struggled to survive in the same way that traditional retail and restaurants have. For this reason, it's recommended that the city council enact a policy to reject all video gaming licenses for businesses. With a primary revenue source in fuel, convenience or liquor. What we tend to see out there is that when you do that, those businesses become gaming parlors. And their secondary business is whatever products they're selling. That's added to the proliferation and it's also added to the clustering. Council may also want to consider, consider limit gaming to restaurants with a minimum number of cooked menu options, making sure that they're an actual restaurant. Versus, A, we're going to serve you a hot dog and go ahead and gamble here. Again, we turn, we turn that into a gaming parlor. The same thing with, when we, when we get our hotels and Sheridan Crossing and we look at that where. What we're looking at is a business where gaming is secondary, where the business is not reliant on the gaming to survive. Video gaming is not shown to provide a trickle benefit to adjacent uses. Additionally, these uses do not typically provide a transparent inviting aesthetic to the area as evidenced by the excessive slot window decals. And the small nooks and crannies which tend to occupy, where they tend to occupy. For this reason, video gaming should be discouraged as a principal use throughout the whole city. The city can't prohibit video gaming messaging on signage, so it cannot stop businesses from opting to use their signs, outside allowance for slots or video gaming signs. However, the city can consider limiting common video game signage such as those waving feather flags. Neon window signs, temporary banners, all of these commonly used by the major video gaming terminal operators. When we talk about our appearance code, we're going to. I'm confident that as that comes out and we have a code that talks about commercial appearance and, and, and the quality of commercial appearance. Proper signage is going to play a big role in that and. Though gaming exists, we shouldn't look like Las Vegas. That's our, it's just our recommendation.
Great. Greg, I, I, I know as you said in regards to the advertisement and getting rid of the flags. But that's another thing, I guess, in the appearance. I think that's something we do need to really look at, you know. Even just all the signs on, on those that have the gaming license to just basically almost do away with it. You know, maybe have a decal that you got gaming here. But, you know, if you don't flash it, you know, it, it makes the appearance looks better. You know, it, I think that that's something that we need to really look at, you know, throughout the city. If they want to hold a license. I guarantee you, if, if we told them that, you know, all you can have is a sticker, they're going to put that sticker and be done with it. Because they're going to bring in the people they want to bring into. They're, you know, people are going to know there's gaming in that facility. Do you need, don't need, it is not needed to be advertised and it just brings the appearance of the community down when you have all that out there.
Yes, sir. It's worth noting that video game, gaming provides a real financial benefit to the city and to local businesses as we begin to collect that push tax. Since Waukegan's case got settled, we're talking two point five million dollars, that could fix Broadway, that could. But I mean. It's, it's two point five million dollars and I will tell you that from other communities that I have served. When a unexpected stream of revenue comes in, there are opportunities that the council can do to dedicate that revenue to certain things such as. Capital projects in, in all seriousness. So, this benefit should be considered against some of the negatives already described. It does, it does not appear that we have an overwhelming amount of quantity, even though we exceed the average of some like populated communities. But we can certainly do better, we can certainly do better on how we situate them, where we situate them and in what business we situate them. We, again, we shouldn't have row after row after row of gaming, because, gaming places, so.
Oh, Alderman January, then Alderman Evans. Oh, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Chief of Staff, excellent job.
Thank you.
That was a lot of work. I so appreciate it, appreciate it. I think all the Aldermen do here as well as the mayor and everyone else, the citizens hearing this detail. And thank you for the recommendations. I hugely have always been a proponent that we need to either put a stop. Or we need to start limiting. And this data has just definitely proved everything that I have been saying for years. So thank you so much for all the work you and your team have done. One thing that I want the Aldermen to take note of though, is there something that I had said a few years ago? About the fact that eventually our community is going to be so saturated. With these gaming that eventually that revenue is going to start. To, to just.
It's not going to go up.
Yeah, it's not going to go up anymore, it's just going to flat line. And you're already starting to see that in the data. So I just wanted to point that out to the Aldermen. To keep that in mind as you're moving forward and making decisions. For the city and, and for businesses. I think there is enough gaming, I think there's enough alcohol. We need to look at other avenues of bringing in revenue besides through this method. So, thank you so much again, I appreciate it. I'm glad I was able to see the results and I look forward to seeing what the city does with that, thank you.
The, the council, what we would recommend now is that. I would work, I would work with the city attorney to craft language to be placed into our current ordinance for gaming. Putting in some of the restrictions we, we discussed types. The existing businesses are already existing. For us, it, it, it wouldn't be appropriate or I think there'd be some legal challenges to us trying to alter the way they do business. We can certainly, if the signage that the mayor discussed and was discussed here and has been discussed in the room. For businesses that have been. Established in using gaming, we can make an approach on appearance. I mean, that is something that's still within our purview to do without compromising their day to day functions. Again, these are, this is signage that they've been allotted and anything beyond that, we can turn around and say, no, you can't do it anymore. The, so what I'm asking to do is to turn around, work with the city attorney, bring back recommended language with the recommendations we have here. Like primary reuse, use versus secondary use, the ability for staff to turn around and verify through. Sales tax dollars what's actually being done as fifty percent of the business versus the gaming. Bring that language back to the council into another committee hearing. Let the council decide what they want to accept, what they don't want to accept, what other suggestions they may have. And then hopefully be able to craft that into an ordinance that's stronger. And it's, it'll certainly reflect the character and the quality and of our community and our residents.
Alderman. With the amount of money that we receive off of gambling.
The amount of money that we receive off of gambling.
I, I don't remember seeing a line, I just.
It's in the, it's in the, it's in the budget under two lines, one of them is the revenue line from the gaming proceeds that we get, the other one is under licenses. You'll see a hundred and seventy thousand dollars there and I think five hundred and sixty two thousand. The one point eight additional million dollars in push. Those are dollars that I'm calculating based on the numbers that were presented in Waukegan and how much they had. Or how much they would have collected in the course of a year divided by, I did a. Pro, prorating it. The push tax, we put two hundred. Two hundred thousand dollars in a line in this upcoming budget, though we, we are confident that once collection begins and we initiate that, we're going to well exceed that number.
Will we get a monthly?
Yes. It'll, it'll come with the, it'll come with the comptroller's monthly budget report where she reports the revenues and expenditures.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to see, is the gaming piece, will the casino be separate line item? Or will there?
Separate. Yeah, it's separate. And that money, and that's designed that way and Tawanda can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's designed that way so that way we know exactly what money we're transferring into the pension.
Miss. Mr. Mayor. Alderman. Just for the record again, second ward, that appearance code that we spoke about in the budget for the twenty thousand dollars. That's what this money is, what we're doing with it now, we're trying to work this appearance code out. But the thing that I wanted to bring up to Greg was what I noticed in the second ward. Is we have a lot, we have more primary.
Yeah.
Gaming.
Absolutely.
The other wards, they tend to have a gas station with gaming, a filling station, a restaurant with gaming, where we have Lucky Jack's.
Lucky Spin, yeah.
Lucky Spin, and I believe that. If, if it's a secondary business, they advertise a little different. Where they only use one window for lights, right, because they have to use the other window for liquor or restaurant or whatever. But when you start dealing with your primary business just being gaming, then that's looking. It appears like those are the ones that light up like Christmas trees, right, and stand out is because they're trying to attract. Instant lights, 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 psychology, I want to go play the game, right? So when we're working on that appearance code. Is will that be taken into consideration as well, because like with the sticker. It works great if it's with a liquor store, I mean, or with a restaurant, right, it's excellent. But now when you just have a gaming parlor. Is there any way that? In the future, we can say, okay, we only want one gaming parlor on Sherwin Row.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question, Alderman, the. How, how I envision this happening throughout the coming years as we continue to develop. Is as businesses go away, first of all, the gaming license, liquor license isn't transferable. So you turn around and you can't, you know, get it from my brother and then you're just going to go keep the business, it doesn't work that way. So by attrition, those parlors go away. And then what replaces them is what's required in the new ordinance, which will be. A primary use with a secondary use of gaming so that the gaming is, is, yeah, it's not their bread and butter.
And I guess you would probably have to add something in there, no parlor within a thousand feet of another parlor, I know we got into tricky grounds there with churches next to bars and. Setting parameters for businesses, you know, dollar store next to a dollar store. Where we can only have one primary gaming parlor. And on Sherwin Row, then maybe one on Twenty Second Street or wherever else they want.
We, we can offer in the language to get the legal opinion on that, but that's what, that's, uh, part of the, uh, issue that I brought up with the data that I pulled on. Took the square footage or square, um, uh, square areas of, uh, miles of every community, turned it around, broke it, broke it down by the number of residents. I broke it down by the number of terminals. I broke it down by the number of establishments just to get a good in-depth analyzation of, of the, uh, uh, density of the terminals. And when we look at our clusters, that's the remedy for our clusters, to turn around and incorporate something in the ordinance that says you cannot operate within a thousand feet of another, uh, business that even if they have gaming collateral, secondary. We can make that decision. The council can make that decision. So, I, and I'll work it through with legal to make sure we don't step on, on our own feet.
And, and to what the mayor said, I, I guess, um, if we don't show it, right? So, let's say we have a restaurant next to a liquor store, and they're all secondary, right? And they got the little sticker up there, right? That if you're going into the restaurant, you go game there. If you're going into the liquor store, you might go game there. But it's not showing, right? So, you can kinda have cluster at that point, right? But I think the parlors where you're lighting everything up, right? And that's all they have in that window is gaming, right? That is, I guess, what I would be more concerned, me as an Alderman in the second ward, you know, I don't mind that the businesses have gaming as long as you put the sticker on the window. But for some of the primary parlors in that second ward, we gotta tone the lights down.
And, and, and we'll definitely work on that. We see that, we want that, we want, uh, lower density. We want, uh, probably above all else, um, is to, uh, have the ga- gamers end up buying from that store, so we boost up sales tax. So, if we've got something good for them to sell here that this person needs while they're gaming, we'll get your loaf of bread and your milk or whatever you're gonna do there and wha- whatever the case. Uh, one piece of information I didn't expand on, I shouldn't, I didn't even touch on, but one of the things we looked at were, uh, uh, a criminal activity as related to the gaming terminals. And there is no correlation. The difference is though, we've had incidences occur, but they weren't related to the gaming. They were at, outside a gaming establishment or outside an establishment that had gaming, but the incident wasn't tied to the game. And, and, and that, that was a little bit tough to navigate to say, okay, what, what was real? Did somebody turn around and pull somebody else's slot? And then, or however it works, I don't, my wife doesn't give me money to go game. And if it's okay, Mayor, and if the committee agrees, then we'll just move this, uh, uh, move forward with working with city attorney on this and, and bringing some to the council.
Please, yep. And then, again, as, uh, Alderman January, and I think the council itself said, excellent job, very detailed. Thank you. All right, uh, we're removing number two, number three, uh, discussion of, uh, buy local campaigns. Are we campa- are we campaigning?
Okay, it's rebranding now. Perked up.
I just wanted to give, uh, everybody a visual, uh, Chief of Staff, uh, Staff, uh, Jackson asked, uh, Taylor and myself to, uh, work together to come up with, uh, a concept of a buy local campaign. Um, the, the goal of a buy local campaign is to create an environment conducive to uh, the creation of a thriving local economy supported by local residents and also visitors. Um, people learn to spot something like you have in front of you and know that they are buying local. Um, so what are the purposes of a buy local campaign? Uh, there are many. Uh, there's economic development, there's also community pride, community engagement, and mutual commercial support. Um, local business owners will do business with local, other local business owners. Um, studies suggest that merely suggesting to buy local is sufficient motivation for individuals to break what's known as the chain habit. Um, corporations spend billions of dollars yearly to gain top-of-mind awareness so that consumers almost instinctively patronize businesses that are not necessarily in their local economy's best interest. For instance, um, of every local dollar that's spent at a business that's not locally owned, about forty-three cents uh, remains in the community through employee wages, taxes, and other local fees. However, out of each dollar that's spent at a locally-owned business, about sixty-eight cents stays in the community through wages, taxes, fees, and additional funds retained through local ownership and patronage of other local businesses. Uh, homeownership and local charitable functions carried out by local business owners. Just some quick math, that's an extra twenty-five percent, uh, that remains in the community, uh, when you spend with a local, uh, business. Uh, that additional revenue can be used to bolster education, infrastructure projects like Broadway. Um, and also local initiatives that are aligned with, uh, local community priorities. Um, we get to support the, um, the initiatives that are important to us, not are, that are important to the county, uh, the state, or, uh, federal. Um, conscientious local spenders, these people who will look and say, hey, well, maybe there's some things I can change um, to, uh, spend more of my money locally. Those local spenders, when faced with the option to support community, can make a difference if they choose to spend even a small fraction of their dollars in local businesses. A few examples, uh, a car park purchased at Twin City Auto, City Auto Parts on Ten Street. Uh, breakfast at Mia's Pancake House, just heard about that. Uh, it's a local business that's new. And depending on local dollars to be successful. Um, we saw the owner right here in city council tonight. And so, instead of, um, going to Denny's, um, we can, uh, eat locally at Mia's Pancake House. Um, or a bag of fresh roasted coffee from Coffee by the Roast. Um, there, there are so many, uh, different ways that people can, uh, buy locally. Um, I learned from our treasurer, uh, that there's even a way to mitigate, uh, our absence of a grocery store, a big box store by buying online and picking up at Walmart or Best Buy. Uh, these are all ways that we can have money stay in our community. Uh, and this is, uh, what, uh, Taylor and myself would like to explore. Uh, come up with, um, a campaign where we could just educate the public. I mean, it's, it's just that simple, uh, to educate people and let them make informed decisions based on their situation uh, that can, uh, that can help our city and, um, move our city forward with, uh, new businesses and new opportunities. Uh, one thing I would like to note is that, uh, Taylor did, uh, state that, uh, there would be some, uh, there would be some criteria that, um, wouldn't allow hu- uh, certain businesses to be, uh, involved, which is gaming, uh, liquor, uh, and things of that nature. So, there would be some restrictions. Uh, so, that is the conclusion of- Right, as a principal use, correct. Thank you. So, um, as I said, this is just, um, a, a concept. We'd like to, um, give it more definition going forward, but we wanted to bring it before council tonight so you're aware. Are there any questions?
Um, I got a quick question. Does the city of North Chicago have like a brochure uh, with all the businesses in our community? Like a directory, is that something that can be considered, uh, from your office as putting together uh, something like that and, and maybe using this brand, buy local, um, with some form of a directory?
Um, uh, it's, it's definitely something that we could, um, explore through this program. Um, you know, of course, there's always, uh, limitations. Um, there's, um, you know, businesses that come and go. And so, having it in a, in a, a hard form, but possibly, um, you know, doing something online, uh, would be.
The difference that's gonna help us there is now everyone's getting business licenses. So, we know who's open and what business. Before, we weren't issuing, I'm aware we're doing it consistently. So, that's where the transience comes in.
See, that's meaning, cause like I say, it, it's nice, even if you, if it is a situation where we can put it online, where someone can go and look it up, you know, and say, oh, this is the directory in North Chicago of the different things, you know? Um, yeah, obviously, I've seen other communities do it, you know, whatever restaurants or food source places you have. Uh, again, it's, it's like you say, we're, we're branding ourselves, so I'm thinking this is another way of doing the rebranding as, as we're calling it to, to put the information out there, so, um, you know. Like I said, I know our community to the north of us used to have what is called shop and dine. And that was the directory where they had all the information for the various, uh, restaurants and, uh, stores that wanted to be part of that process. Something to think about.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Alderman January.
Another thought process with this, um, is to also not only have on, online on our website, um, so that way it's easy to update and not have a hard copy where you're constantly hurting trees. Um, but also to highlight different local businesses, like in the, the paper that's sent out, um, on the website. Just to highlight somebody maybe once a month or, you know, every couple of months, just to also booster some of that, let's, you know, buy local.
Yes, ma'am. And that is one of the, um, the aspects of this program that we're looking at is how can we use, um, city platforms to promote these businesses and, um, to highlight these businesses. So that, as I said, with, um, not only with local, um, with residents, but visitors. So, when, uh, the people come in for the, the Navy graduations, um, they can learn, uh, to, to go and look for these businesses and, and spend locally.
I just wanted to highlight, one of the core components of this would be what we've discussed is doing up to two visits a month with a different business. So, uh, maybe the first Monday of a month, we're visiting a certain business, and two weeks later, we're visiting with another business. And we would invite the mayor and the, uh, Alderman of that ward to come out for that visit to engage with the business owner. And then we'd post, uh, media onto social media, so Facebook, LinkedIn, et cetera. And that might change over time. We might do videos one month, uh, because that's what's, uh, uh, able to highlight that business the most. Uh, next month, it might just be a static photo, uh, but we'll try to keep it, um, a little bit fresh. Highlight things that are unique to our community as opposed to just kind of blanket stuff.
Yes.
We wanna work with them and get their interest in selling and-
And I wanna just highlight and, and note, um, obviously, there's a different, um, distribution of businesses throughout the wards. There are wards where there's just really no business, right? And so, we'd like to make an effort to try to invite Aldermen who maybe don't have as many businesses to, to come along with some of those that do have a lot of businesses so that it's a little bit more equally.
Are there any other questions? All right. Well, thank you, Alderman, as we continue to move-
Thank you.
On this endeavor, I think it's gonna be a great, uh, opportunity for the businesses and the city itself to, uh, have that, uh, uh, vision and the, the exposure, so. Okay, we have one more item, discussion of seventh ward, uh, representation. Greg, I'm gonna turn that over to you. I know that, uh-
Yeah, it's, um, everybody, uh, each of the city council members, they got a memo, staff memo in the, uh, in their packages. I just wanna kinda go over some of the highlights. We, we've come to be made aware it affects, uh, I was, are sitting in Alderman, an incumbent or a, yeah, a Alderman-elect, and, uh, one of our commissioners, uh, from planning and zoning that Forestall is asking, uh, actually, they're not renewing leases, um. There, yeah, I was trying to be gentle. Thank you, Alderman. Yeah, they're telling, they're telling, uh, resi- residents in, in Forestall uh, that, uh, they will no longer renew their lease in, in very short order, as a matter of fact, with a limited, I think if anything, extension thirty days, and that there's a price associated with that from what I've come to understand. Um, so it puts us in a bit of a quagmire. It was brought up earlier by Mr. January on the Woodlands situation. We didn't know about Woodlands until, this is how we found out, I think Tawanda's still here. The, all of a sudden, somebody came to the front window trying to do a transfer stamp for the property, uh, of the Woodlands. And Tawanda came to me and she goes, do you know, I said, no, I don't know anything about it. And she goes, well, a nonprofit was the one who is buying or acquiring the, the Woodlands, and this company says they're working with the nonprofit. Long and short of it, they tried to get out of it, out of the transfer stamp, which was about a quarter of a million dollars for the city. And, uh, unless I'm wrong on that number, Tawanda, am I right? Okay, that's very seldom. The, uh, so, uh, we, we come to find out that it was a university foundation that acquired the property. And what we were thinking about was, could the people who were living in Forestall potentially go to the Woodlands not knowing what the need may be for those individuals in Forestall in size or, you know, area? So, I had, uh, coffee with the Chief of Staff for Roslin Franklin University. And I turned around and sat with, her name's Lee, and I sat with Lee and I said, uh, first time we had met, and she goes, well, I'm glad we met. She goes, is there anything you wanna talk about? I said, yeah. I said, what's happening with Woodlands? And she goes, I said, no, I said, are you, uh, did you guys buy Woodlands? And she goes, no. And then there was the pause, and I was like, okay. And she goes, a foundation purchased it, which we came to know as a result of the transfer tax. And they're leasing it to us strictly for students. And that ten years down the line, they will have an option to purchase the property. Now, whether they do or not, you know, that's their decision, certainly. So, that brings us to the quagmire that we're in, and that is there's still potential for representation out of the Woodlands, but it's gonna be a student that's transient. That may be their one year, two years, four years. And then you've got Forestall, which is active-duty military and spouses and dependent children. Some of those children may be a voting age and able to run, uh, for political office. And, and the spouses certainly can. But then the military gets orders every two years, maybe three, if you're lucky to stay in a way. So, we have, now have this very transient representation for the seventh ward. There's a lack of stability there. So, at some point, you know, we, we had conversations with legal just two weeks ago on this. I don't even think it was two weeks ago, but, and kinda said, what do we do? And, uh, legal had told us that the person has to live in the ward in order to represent the ward. Uh, we're, we, we have a couple of other questions that just came up that, uh, we wanna pose again of, are there any exceptions because of the type of situation there is with the military? Not sure there is, but we wanted to ask the question to make sure we left no rock unturned, and, and we're still pursuing that at this time. Long and short of the memo, long and short of my, my discussion here is that at some point the council is gonna have to, and I heard about the history on how we got the seventh ward and how that came about. But at some point, the council's gonna have to look at at least one of three options, the redistricting, um, the potential of, uh, which will, which is probably the least, it's labor-intensive but least cumbersome for, for a cou- couple of reasons, because it doesn't have to go to referenda. Or you, the, the city can change its form of government to have one Alderman elected at large, but that's a change of form of government which will require a, uh, a referendum. And then it could also reduce the number of wards. And that's something else. I, you know, I understand that this wasn't always the way it was and with the seven wards, uh, so. Um, and I think at one time I was told there was a liaison representative from the military base or something like that, but um, the, the whole thing's to begin to give some thought and some discussion. Uh, we're still vetting some legal, um, uncertainties. Uh, and can, can, can the incumbent stay? Can he, does the incumbent have to go? No, that, what, that, okay, the, well, you're still, you're still here though, so the, the Alderman-elect, um, and then what happens after that? Um and then what happens after that? And if it's a represent, I think by law, the, if I remember correctly, the uh mayor has to appoint within sixty days. You gotta find a candidate to appoint, though. And and then again, this is a transient population. It doesn't have a lot of ties to the community. You know, i- in fact, I, other than being here the short time they are and their children attending our schools, make sure they have children and and it's not to be anything disparaging to our military. As a veteran, I can tell you, it that's part of the life where you make those hops. Um but it still doesn't allow for a great deal of continuity when it comes to policymaking. So um just to make the council aware of it and how we're proceeding at this time. So.
Is it only at at Forestall?
Yeah.
Cause they got more over on Lewis Avenue, Lewis.
Yeah, Halsey, Halsey, Halsey Village has been, yeah, is totally empty. Nimitz.
They they closing that down too.
And so you've got Forestall, they retire, I I it was ninety five, ninety seven percent was the requirement that it, once it got to a certain level, non-affiliated civilians, uh were not going to have their li- uh leases renewed. So
Speak to um the Ward Seven. Uh my husband and I have lived there for eighteen years in Forestall Village. So this is very, very hard on us. Um we have developed a lot of friendships out of there. And to find out that the woodlands has been purchased and it's by a non-for-profit for, and please don't get this wrong, that non-for-profit is Roslin Franklin University. It's one of their non-for-profit
That could be, yeah.
Okay, entities. They have taken over as of our election day, April first. They took over that building.
It was quick.
Okay, so I want everyone to be aware of that, because obviously, nobody was aware. Um I'm not sure about the mayor and how long he's known, but there's been something in the background about that, but what, that's beside the point. The point is, this apartment building has two hundred and forty-some apartments that are gonna come off of our tax roll. That is huge. And it's going to hurt us by the fact that they have done this without a public notice to the community. Because it is a public building, it's owned. Private, it's it's own private, but it's a public building. So the thing is, once they privatized it completely to just the students from the the city, it's gonna come off the tax rolls. It has to. It has no choice. So it's pretty much a done deal, just to let the council know.
The um
Hold on, I'm not done. I still have the floor. The other piece is within the military, they are closing Halsey and Nimitz. Um Nimitz is gonna be the last to be closed, and I only, I've heard once from one person that they were, their lease was not renewed in Nimitz. And they were allowed to move over to Forestall. This is really sad, what's going on in 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 our community and in that ward. They were allowed to move over to Forestall, and now they just gotta notice they gotta move out of there. Okay, so this is not a a good thing that's going on over here. Um the other issue is um with Nimitz closing, that's why they gotta move all of the military that are roughed in Halsey and Nimitz to Forestall, and they only have so many units available at homes. So that it's gonna come to them first. And it it's been in my lease for years, that um if they need your unit, they will give you only a thirty-day notice. So every year, I have always been, okay, I'm really gonna still be here. I fortunately have had a good living there. It's eighteen years. Um I'm sad to leave my home, that I know. Sad for my husband, um with his being blind right now. Um he's gotta learn a whole new home. So it's just, it's been very traumatic and very sad what's going on. And, you know, I just kind of feel like if we'd known any of this two years ago, or about a year and a half ago, when we redistrict, we could have taken care of it.
Sure.
Yeah, we could have.
You know, and and not have this issues today. So um I just wish the best for North Chicago with this issue. Um, you know, I'll still be nearby. I'm not going far. Um my husband and I will be not too far off. Um we'll probably still come into the meetings and see what's going on. But, you know, I just, I wanted you guys to know what's what's happening in Ward Seven. Um it was a shock when I was going out campaigning, hearing from the residents, and they are yelling at me for not knowing. I felt so betrayed. And the only reason why we know about Nimitz is my husband has um contacts in the DOD. And we spoke with them, and we know exactly what's going on. So I just wanted to share all of that information that we know um in a way to hopefully help you all make decisions moving forward. So um God bless North Chicago. God bless our city council here, our mayor, as we have to move forward with making some major decisions.
We uh we uh we looked at, we found out because somebody said same thing. They, all of a sudden, they got noticed that their lease wasn't going to be signed. A- and it was like, whoa, what's up? And then ma- mayor and I were talking, I said, are we still doing police protection there? What's going on with the school? Where's five hundred things are going through our mind, and you know, we didn't turn around. And then what compounds thing is that I I asked Taylor to go out to look, uh the mayor uh had a question on it. Asked Taylor to go out to look at the number of houses in Forestall that are boarded up. And how many units up there that could be potentially lea- leased units, because that was the problem with Halsey. I think we found twenty-nine units out there that were uh, yeah, exactly.
So this is part of the reason why things are occurring the way they are. And I am upset that they defaulted on us. And that's why home, the homes have not been torn down or replaced. But those that are boarded up are seriously um contaminated. Yeah, very bad. Um with the lead and the asbestos. So there, there's no way anyone can live in those homes. So um, you know, I it's it's very sad what's going on. So.
You you know, let me just say that, you know, I once we we found out about this, which was not too long ago, I mean, yeah, there's a lot of things that we have to as a city start to really look at. How, you know, how do we redistrict to make sure that that representation is there? Uh it's, and and I know we've been in touch with uh uh Mr. Bowlen, who is the legal for uh, you know, wo- works for redistricting. Uh I I I almost, as as we sit here and and talk about it, I think we may need to get in touch also, maybe even with our uh uh legislative, you know, uh people to say, hey, you know, this has came to us so quickly that we have to be able to say, because we're a military community, you know, allow us more time for an opportunity to get representation. You know, right now, there, you know, it's, it says sixty days, but that sixty days is somebody that's an alderman pretty much on their own decides to leave, not being forced out of the ward. And 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 because it is a military community and the military ward, we don't have an opportunity to just come back and say who who can, you know, fill that position, cause it's been sad. If if we go to uh Roslin Franklin, they're there only for a short time, and the military is only there for a short time. And until we have an opportunity to figure out how to redistrict, I think that there should be some compensation for the city of North Chicago and a military community, the way we are, to have uh an opportunity to help to resolve this issue. So uh
Yeah, the alderman-elect, and i- it would be the same if if uh Alderman Janey had had won reelection. They didn't ask to move.
Right.
So the the question is, should there be some allowance to turn around and let the representation remain? So we have that consistency with representation.
Yeah.
So.
So, uh, Alderman Murphy.
So as I'm listening to this, I mean, and and reading the memo about what potential options we might have to deal with this on a, I'll say, a longer term or a more um, a more long-term or permanent direction, is there some way that right now, because of I, it's a city ordinance that determines the rules about where an alderman can live, right? Oh, that's a state, okay. Is there any way we without getting on the wrong side of the state, can temporarily put in some kind of, I'll say, protection that says, yeah, we know what the state says, we know what our rules say, but because of this particular situation, because it's so singular, this kind of thing just
Right.
Doesn't happen all the time. Um that that way it, there's some we've got an incumbent alderman and an alderman-elect, and we would wind up, if I guess, if if we don't think of something, and the other solutions could take time, is there some way we can basically temporarily suspend the rule, for lack of a better word, that says, this is where you have to live if you serve?
And and I think that's part of the other couple of questions that, Mayor, you asked me to look out and little, talk to legal about and see, and one of them too, that we haven't had to approach yet, again, again, the window's been small for us on this, is approaching Congressman uh Schneider and asking from a federal level, is this being dealt with in other places where there's a lack of representation? And 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 granted, that election law falls, elections fall under the state. But is there some kind of outlier? Is there something out there that turns around and says, you know, we we fund schools that are in, uh the mi- the the federal government does, you know, provide some some funding for schools that are, you know, in covered by a city, cause the military kids go there. I mean, I I guess we're not ready to throw up our hands and say we won't get represented by somebody who lives permanent, more permanent in the community. So.
So, yeah, uh, so at this point, I can say we're, we're still looking into it. You know, I know we've got the newly elected uh uh alderman here and that will be sitting. But whether it's yourself or him, we gotta deal with a situation. We gotta deal with a situation that's gotta be resolved. And uh, you know, there's, there's just you know, we just gotta continue to move, you know, to see what what we have to do. And and if if it is, if it comes down to it, how are we gonna redistrict? That's their next, you know, I mean, if it all comes, push come to shove, we're gonna have to try to figure out redistricting of these seven wards to Well, I mean, Well, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that I think they're gonna be up on the table, up on the, up in the air. You know, do you, you know, I mean, do you, these are things that cross my mind now. Do you go to, you know, five wards or or four wards and then have two at large? That, you know, and those at large would be the ones that would represent the areas for the military that could, you know. Or do you redo it, ask back to seven wards? It just, how do you make it so that each ward has representation of part of the community? That is, you know, that is gonna be non-transit. So uh and and these are gonna be decisions that are gonna come from this council. Uh just to let you know, it's, you know, so uh making you aware that over these next few months, year, whatever it's gonna take, this is gonna be a decision council is gonna have to make to decide how these wards are gonna be brought back into compliance, so that we can be be fully represented in all aspects. So.
Question. Would it be fair, I I noticed in this memo that it say that you will be the person that would appoint someone for that position if you had to? Now, we have an elected person that's coming in. Would you keep the same person versus if that person?
The appointment would have to be because they lived in the ward.
Yeah, I'm, I understand that.
But but if if the alderman-elect doesn't live in the ward, unless we get some other feedback from either state, legal, uh the congressman?
Right.
As of right now, the law says that you have to reside within the boundaries that you represent. If the alderman-elect can no longer live there, that the mayor could not, it would not be the mayor's option to appoint.
Well, as of right now, say, as of right now, even though we got the memo, it's not in, this is not in effect as of right now.
No, uh-uh.
Okay.
No, that's correct.
Therefore, he gets sworn in.
Yes.
Okay, now, once he gets sworn in, you can't take it away, cause he
Yes, you can.
If he has to move.
Yeah, he 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 has to live in the district.
No, I understand with the move, but that's automatic, no kind of like saying.
That's what I, that's our dilemma right now.
That's why, that's why.
That's what we're, that's what we're trying to figure out. How can we get around that?
Sixty days is
Yeah, it's a blink.
I love our military, but as we continue to say, they're transient, and while they're being transient, there's no buy-in to North Chicago.
Our, all right, our next meeting is coming.
All right, is there anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to uh close the commu- uh, yes. The move by Alderman Smith, second by Murphy, that the uh committee that holds stand adjourned. All in favor? Close, motion carried.